Good evening. This is the Board of Selectmen's meeting of March 22, 2021 at 6:30 PM. Please ask if anybody is recording the meeting and announced that the LakeCam is taping the meeting. In accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, related to the COVID-19 outbreak emergency, the March 22, 2021 public meeting of the Board of Selectmen shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group communication. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com backslash LakeCam. You do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to review at a later date at lakecam.tv. And just so everybody knows, we do have the chat feature on as well if you want to ask any questions or make comments. Okay, as a blooming matter, my name is Rich LaCamera. I'm the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. For me to affirm that all members and staff and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and here. Selectmen Day.
Present.
Selectmen Fabian.
Present.
And we have Tracy Craig McGee, an executive assistant.
Present.
And we have Arnie Sky, who's going to be our new town administrator.
Present.
And this open meeting of Lakeville Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with the Governor's Executive Order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. And out of to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been ordered and advised and directed by the Commonwealth to spend all public meetings. As such, the Governor suspends the requirement for the Open Meeting Law to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical locations. Further, all members of the public body are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda of this meeting allows public parties to meet entirely remotely as reasonable public access as afford to the public, along with the deliberation of this meeting. Okay, so the first thing we have, well, the second thing we have in the agenda is going to meet with the Park Commission and the Finance Committee at 8 o'clock. The third thing we have is introduce Arnie Sky as our new town administrator and to vote to approve the contract. I would ask the Chairman of the Search Committee if she wants to say anything about the hiring process and how we came to hiring this person.
Well, I don't know if Ari knows this, but we had a pool of 46 people, I believe, from seven different states. And you're it. We had a search committee made up of five people representing different areas of the town. We worked with MRI, the Municipal Resources Search Firm. They were excellent, wonderful, very meticulous, thorough. I can't say enough good things about them. The search company, the search committee narrowed it down from 12 to a pool of six that we interviewed all in one day in person. And then from that, we brought forward three people. And Ari got my vote and I made a motion really quick that night. Kind of caught my fellow board members off guard maybe. But like I said, I had the privilege of speaking with him an additional hour more than everyone else and reviewing all kinds of stuff. And I think he really is going to do a really good job for the town. So I'm really glad that we all agreed to make the offer and glad that Ari has accepted. So I'm very excited right now.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to appoint Ari Sky as the town administrator and a vote to approve his contract.
So moved.
Second motion.
Anybody have any discussion? Anybody want to say anything? Brian, you.
Yeah, so I would just like to say thank you not only to the Search Committee and to Leah and Ficorinda for really heading up that process, as well as MRI, who brought us a wealth of candidates, even not knowing anything about what was going on. The Search Committee, they're real cagey. They would say, hey, we've got a lot of great people that we're looking at. We're really excited about their semifinals interviews and see if the three folks that we'd end up with in the finals. I was really happy to see that. So I think the process worked really, really well. Really excited to see Ari coming on board and see what he can do for the town. So welcome aboard, Ari. Really happy to see you here and looking forward to great things.
Likewise, I think the process, like Brian said, went very well. And I think that the Board unanimously voted to hire him. And I think he's a great candidate. And we're looking forward to moving forward here. And I think that this is a good choice for all of us. So I will... All those in favor?
Fabian, aye.
Aye, aye.
The camera, aye. Okay, Arnie, Arnie Sky, if you want to say anything.
Yep.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate it. I had a boss once who, the first day I started the job, he took me out to lunch and he said, this is the only nice thing I'll ever do for you. I promise you that will not be our relationship. But I am looking forward to working with you and helping execute your vision for the town of Lakeville, bring it forward. I'm anxious to get to know the organization and the community and the flavor and texture that is uniquely unique to Lakeville. And I'm excited about getting started. So I have a little bit of time till I'm fully on the job, since my current contract. But in the meantime, I'll start to ramp up a bit and get to know people and get a sense of what the landmines and what the opportunities are and so on. And hopefully validate your faith in me, which I really do really appreciate. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Selectmen's announcements. The annual town election is scheduled for April 5, 2021 at the Ted Williams Camp. Voting hours are from 12 PM to 8 PM. Absentee early ballots for the election are available at the Town Clerk's office. Please visit the town website at www.lakevilleMA.org under News for information on how to vote absentee or early voting. The Town Clerk is requesting if anybody's planning to run as a write-in candidate. If not yet contacted her, please call the Town Clerk's office or email her at L Drain at lakevilleMA.org. The Lakeville Town Office will guide you on the general requirements that are needed to do a write-in candidate. Okay, there's one more announcement that since this is going to be our last regular Selectmen's meeting. I know Leah and I would like to thank Brian for the time he's served. We wish you'd stay around longer, Brian, but we certainly understand. And you've done a great job. And we talked about some issues. We resolved a number of issues. There's still more to be done, as you know. So we appreciate the time that you've given the town and wish you the best of luck. But I do want you to say, we are meeting with the Park Commission at 8 o'clock. And I'm sure there'll be one more meeting to hopefully vote on the Boston Tavern agreement. But we wanted to say it now, just in case it doesn't happen. So thank you, Brian. We wish we could have a party for you, but we can't.
We'll party later. So I just want to agree with Rich's sentiments. Brian, you came in and the amount, not just the amount of work, but the depth of work that you've done in really less than a year is really impressive, to say the least. You came, just the technology line items and the budget that have been just, let's just put this here and put that there. The amount of time you put in deciphering, like you said a couple of meetings ago, you know, asking the accounting department for this, that, and the other thing. So you could not just see, but verify what each of those things were. And that's huge. I mean, if that had been the only thing you had done in a year, that would have been impressive. But the host community agreements, everything, plus just your insight on a daily basis has just been very, very appreciative. And you have a huge Lakeville fan club. So I'm sure when someday you're ready to come back, whatever, to the Board of Selectmen, I'm hoping you'll do something else in between that's not as time consuming. But I have no doubts that you will be voted right in, right away. You have quite the following in Lakeville.
Well, if I may, I mean, it's been a heck of a nine months. It's been a lot of fun. I think we've worked well together. I think we've challenged each other a few times and that's been good and it's been respectful. And I think we've all come out greater in the end. And I'm certainly happy to see we're kind of ending on a high note with finding Ari here. I think that's great. It's been great working with not just the Board, but everybody that supports us and the department heads and the employees and just getting to learn things you don't get to learn as a resident. And you get to see the hard work and the efforts that go in day in and day out with a limited amount of resources. It gives me a much greater appreciation for a lot of the things that go on behind the scenes here that a lot of folks never get the opportunity to see. So thank you to everybody that helps make this town operate. No matter what you do, you might think it's a small bit, but it helps make this crazy engine work. So I'm not going far. I'll be around. So if anybody still wants to chat or needs some things to help out on here and there, I'll be around. So it's been a blast, even though it's been nine months. I wish it was longer, but we got a little guy here that needs some time. So we'll let him grow up and maybe come back and do something else.
Sounds good to me.
Thanks, Brian. Much appreciated. Okay, so next on the agenda is to discuss the request for the Fire Chief to review the job description for the Deputy Fire Chief and to reclassify the position to non-exempt. As you know, the Deputy Fire Chief will be retiring this spring. And so the Fire Chief and the HR Director have provided a new job description and it was forwarded to the Board early in the week. And I know that some of you have talked to the Fire Chief with your questions and so forth. So I know that Chief O'Brien is on here. So I don't know if the Board has any further questions on the job description?
No, no further questions, but just Chief, if you can give us a sense of how the deputy retiring is going to affect your day to day, what your maybe plans are.
Deputy Purcell was the perfect deputy for me on my arrival. It felt like he was there for a reason. He balanced me out. There was nobody in that, probably in Lakeville government or that fire department that knew more about the jurisdiction. And that was perfect for somebody coming from the outside. We balanced each other out very well. I had some, you know, classic trained, lots of certifications, a lot of, you know, very... I was bringing the resume to the table and he was bringing the institutional knowledge. And we complement each other very well. And he owns a big piece of every success that we've had in the last two years. And I will be forever grateful for all the help he's given me, for sure.
Sounds like, sounds like Will.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Okay, Brian, you all set?
First of all, thank you Chief O'Brien for taking time with me just to explain the changes in the role and whatnot and explain it a bit better for me. Appreciate your time. Deputy Purcell, even in my short time here, has been amazing. Like Chief O'Brien said, he's always willing to give time, to give background knowledge and help myself. I don't know anything about a fire department, but he had all the time in the world to spend with me and teach me how things work and how things have been and how things have gotten better under Chief O'Brien. So I think they've been a great dynamic duo in the Chief's new time here with Deputy Purcell. So I thank him for all of his service.
Likewise, I've known Will a long time, a long, long time, longer than you think.
I heard stories.
He's done a great job and he works hard for the town. Like you said, you know, he knows everything.
He's not afraid to tell you.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve the job description for the Deputy Fire Chief and to reclassify the position as non-exempt.
So moved.
Second motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian, aye.
Aye, aye.
The camera, aye. Next on the agenda is to discuss the COVID-19 vaccine update. I had asked the Fire Chief because there's multiple opportunities that are going on as far as vaccine centers and also homebound citizens, we hope. So maybe you can just give us an overview of what's going on so everybody's aware of that, Chief, please.
So again, we're working in concert with the Board of Health, Ed Cullen. He's doing a lot of heavy lifting on this. The COA is a great partner. They're doing a lot of, putting a lot of effort into this. So there's actually two programs that are operating or coming to fruition in parallel. And one of them is a homebound program where we're identifying homebound, not just seniors, but any individual that's not able to get out of their house for a vaccine. These are still vulnerable populations because they're still having healthcare workers come into their homes. They're still having family visit. And for whatever reason, they can't get out of the house. So we have a program coming online soon, hopefully, that's going to allow the fire department to respond out with our EMTs and our paramedics and give that vaccine in the home. We'll stay with you, the 15, 30 minute observation time, whatever's more appropriate for you, and make sure that you handle the shot well, and then we move on to the next house. So that's going to be organized there. We also are entering into a partnership with the towns of Attleboro, Berkeley, Dayton, City of Fall River, Freetown, Seekonk, Somerset, Swansea, and Taunton. The reason why the partnership's so large is that we have to be able to generate 700 vaccines per day to be qualified to run a clinic. I'm sorry, there's a call coming in. So the plan is to basically, they're going to rotate vaccine clinics between all these communities. And my goal is basically to bring a vaccine clinic or vaccine dispensing operation as close as I can to the Lakeville residents. So our seniors and anybody else that's traveling to get a vaccine, they won't have as far to go. And that's just what we're up to. And entering this partnership allows that to happen. Have any questions at all about this?
I'm glad to see it's happening. I mean, great work, Chief. I know you've been pushing and pushing behind the scenes along with Ed Cullen. And it's nice to see some of your efforts are starting to pay off.
Typically, it sounds terrible, but I'm used to getting my way. Work hard at something. It usually works. And this has been a very frustrating experience for me because I haven't gotten my way so far, but we're getting there.
I think the other thing, Chief, is that there's other, besides the large sites, vaccine sites, there's the CVSs of the world are opening up. And some of the others, one down in Dartmouth, there's one in, not CVS, I forget what it's called, but the one at the old Circuit City and the mall and so forth. So there is a lot more opportunity for people to get vaccinated. So please keep trying because they're opening up thousands of appointments every day. So please keep moving in that direction. And I think the only thing we all need to be careful of is that just because, I forget the percentage here in Massachusetts, I want to say it's 36% have been vaccinated now, Chief, somewhere in that area. We can't let down our God because you can see that it's still in the, today it was a thousand something, but over the last five days, it was averaging about 1,800 a day. So this thing is not over. So please continue to protect yourself and so forth and so on. Okay, thank.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I actually was curious before our meeting today. And I went and grabbed the state's data as of March 16. So this may be old. The Chief may have something newer. But as far as Lakeville's concerned, we're sitting at only about 11% of our population. So we're behind the trend a little bit. So even more reason to be cautious.
I probably should reclassify, I should say something different. 36% of the people that qualified for the vaccines, Brian. I'm sorry.
I think the lag too, it kind of, it's a byproduct of the remoteness that the vaccine clinics are from us. Pretty much, there's really, there's nothing, like, it's a little bit of a ride to Foxborough and I think it's reflected there. And I hope, I hope in our push to secure a vaccine clinic here in town, we have a very loyal following. We have, citizens are very supportive of the fire department. And I don't want them to think that somehow they're being disloyal, getting a vaccine from somebody else. So vaccine's a vaccine. And that's our goal here, is to make sure you're vaccinated and safer. So it doesn't matter who you get it from, as long as you get it.
I just, like you said, though, it is our responsibility to help the shut-ins, the folks who just can't leave their home. And I know that you've been trying to do that as soon as the talk of the vaccine came out. So it'll be really nice if we could get that. That would be a really good deed for us to be able to provide for those people.
Those are people that we're very familiar with. They're people that use our services frequently. And it'd be very rewarding to be able to help them out.
Yeah, and it probably would be really put them at ease because they are familiar with you to actually get the vaccine from you. You know, they do know you. So that's a huge, because there's a lot of people that are still afraid, but they may be a little more willing if you tell them, we'll sit with you, like you just said. So we don't want, you know, it's our responsibility to take care of the folks that can't necessarily take care of themselves. So.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Okay, thanks, Chief. Next on the agenda is a request from the Fire Chief to appoint two Call Firefighters, Liam Dow and Kaitlyn Thomas.
Kaitlyn's actually on the Zoom meeting as well. There she is right there. And I'll start with Kaitlyn. Kaitlyn is a licensed DNT. She's also a firefighter, currently a firefighter with Freetown Fire Department. She has a year under her belt. And she's a Lakeville resident. And so she's expressed interest in coming on board and serving her community. And so I'm excited about her application. I'm excited to see her get appointed to the fire department.
Okay. And you want to say, you got to go, Chief?
I'm listening. I'm getting there.
Do you want to say anything about Liam Dow or not?
Liam's actually in, he's in a first responder class as we speak. He's a senior actually at Uponacoot Regional High School. He was part of our junior program. So he came on a little over a year ago. He is an honor student. He has, I don't know how you do this. His grade point average exceeds 4.0. He is going to the Bass Maritime Academy next year. His plans are to join the military. And upon completion of a four-year stint, he wants to become a firefighter paramedic for his hometown, Lakeville. So.
Yep.
Kind of how it's supposed to work, that's pick up good people young and bring them into the culture and show them the way.
Okay.
Yep. All right.
So I'll entertain a motion to appoint Liam Dow and Kaitlyn Thomas as Call Firefighters contingent upon a successful completion of a one-year probationary period. The term will expire on July 31, 2021.
So moved.
Second motion.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Okay, well, we appreciate the appointments and welcome aboard. And hopefully, one of these days, we'll be able to meet you.
Congratulations, Kaitlyn.
Yep. Want to vote?
Got to vote.
All those in favor?
Fabian, aye.
Aye, aye.
Oh, the camera, aye.
All right.
Welcome aboard, Kaitlyn.
Thank you, Kaitlyn.
Yep.
Thank you.
In one day.
It's a nap to be available for the town.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Yep.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. He's disappearing. I can hear the call out there. I hear the fire engines going off.
Sounds like it's going off.
Okay, next is to discuss and vote and approve the salary and wage scales for the fiscal '22 budget. As the Board knows, we had multiple executive sessions to discuss these wage scales. And pretty much, it has to do with the cost of living increase. And also, there was some job reclassifications and some adjustments and certain salary line items. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the salary and wage scale for fiscal '22 budget.
So moved.
Second motion.
Any discussion?
I'll just say that it was, it was a lot of work and a lot of conversation. And I think, I think what we ended up with is really good. But I just want everyone to know that we look at every little thing. And, you know, I can't, you know... Mr. Chair, I know the two of you just put so much into it, myself too. But I think we can be proud of this. So.
Okay, all those in favor? You didn't want to say anything, Brian? You all set?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Fabian, aye.
Aye, aye.
The camera, aye. Okay, next item on the agenda is to discuss and vote to put the following articles on the May 10, 2001 Annual Town Meeting Warrant and refer them to the Planning Board to hold a public hearings, Right to Farm Bylaw, the Petition for Development Opportunities District Bylaw. Basically, an honor for the Planning Board to hold a public hearing. We have to vote on it and then refer to the Planning Board so they can hold public hearings. There will be two more zoning articles. One is the floodplain bylaw, which is 20 pages long, so you know. And Town Council is finalizing the wording on that and that should be available Thursday. And the same thing, they get some changes to the site plan bylaw they want to bring forward. So these first two are the ones first that we need to refer to them so they can have their hearings. So I'll entertain a motion to put these articles on the town meeting warrant and refer to the Planning Board to hold a public hearing for the Right to Farm Bylaw petition for the Development Opportunities District Bylaw.
So moved.
Second motion.
Discussion, I want to say something about the Right to Farm Bylaw. If you recall, a few months back, we had met with the Agricultural Commission and we discussed the reporting requirements and the annual reporting requirements that every house that previously had been approved, notified, I'm sorry, of the Right to Farm Bylaw when it's sold and so forth, that's been changed, okay? That's not a requirement anymore. It's just when a house is sold or when they get a MLC, then they would be given the form. The form would be sent to them out of the tax collectors and treasurer's office. And that form would be sent back and maintained in the Board of Selectmen's office.
Does that require any changing in our bylaw here? Or is that done at the state level for the state level Right to Farm?
No, it requires just the notification. You probably didn't notice that the notification part of it has been changed and that's for our bylaw.
Okay, I didn't notice the wording change. I'm sorry.
That's okay. All right, any further discussion?
No, I think the only point I had when we met with the Agricultural Commission was the definition of farm, being a primary usage of the land. I think that was something important that hopefully we'll speak to at a town meeting.
Okay. This is pretty much already an act that's already in place. So if we just need to have clarification on what farm means, then I guess somebody will have to address that.
Yeah.
And don't forget, we'll have a public hearing. So if anybody wants to question that too, a public hearing will be held with the Planning Board, probably sometime mid-April is my guess. Okay, all those in favor?
Fabian, aye.
Aye, aye.
The camera, aye. Next on the agenda is to discuss the town planner position and Selectmen staffing. As you know, at our last meeting, there seemed to be either a misunderstanding or a disagreement about hiring a town planner. And I think that, you know, this has been discussed with the Planning Board well over a year ago. And, um, I think that, um, you know, this has been discussed with the planning board well over a year ago. And originally they were going to come forward and make a suggestion to hire either contractor or hire a serped, do something on a, an interim basis. See what we actually needed. And of course, that didn't happen. So, you know, now, you know, I think everybody agrees, I believe, including the board, that, uh, we need to hire a town planner. And then the question came up, you know, what about the salary level of the town planner? And, um, so there was a question about that and, uh, the, the HR director had provided some samples of, of a town planner. Of, uh, what it may, may not require. Now, it really should understand that that is really only a placeholder and to have it put on town meetings. So there's some funding available. That planner could make less money, that planner could make more money depending upon, you know, what you're going to do and how you're going to hire that person. And if we had to adjust the salary, we could adjust the salary, you know, at the special time meeting in the fall.
So I think where I was coming in during our budget meeting, what I did not understand was in an earlier meeting, you had said that there's money in the budget for the planner position, which I think we all said, great, that's awesome. We, we fully believe that that is a necessary position in town. What I didn't expect to see was essentially we found eighteen thousand dollars more and then removed the coordinator line item. So with the new town administrator coming in, I do think there is an opportunity there for us to say, you know, do we have the right structure in the town administrator slash selectmen's office? Uh, do they need a chief of staff type position, assistant administrator, what, what, sorry, assistant to the town administrator? Or something on those lines. And if we didn't, um, put some money aside for that as well, would we be stuck? Now that said, um, I did go through the, the information that, uh, the HR director sent us, which I was thankful she did that. Tried to do some really quick analysis on it. It's not perfect by any means. Um, if you break it down by, like, population and such, um, it would put us at full-time, like eighty-nine, five or so. Granted though, that's just using some quick back of the napkin math. Um, what I was thinking is though, if we wanted to wait until the new town administrator's here, is settled, can participate in, you know, all the efforts to come up with a job description. It might be September, October, by the time we get this done anyways, um, or even posted. And then who knows when they would start. So I don't know if we've got room in the budget to say, um, you know, if we're looking at funding it, say for three quarter of the year. Maybe there's enough wiggle room to hold on to both slots.
Well, there's, um, first of all, um, I agree, whatever, the job description was just a draft job description and there are no conditions where we're going to do anything in the next month or so. We were going to, uh, make sure that the town administrator, the opportunity to review this, number one. Number two, you know, is it, is it full-time? Is it part-time? I don't know, you know, whatever. Uh, at the same time, we want to make sure that the planning board and the board of appeals, you know, has the opportunity to do this, to review this draft description. I don't see this happening, you know, in the next three months, Brian, either. Okay. Now, said that, that, uh, and Ari has expressed his concerns. He certainly wants to come in and look at, you know, what the staffing requirements are in our office and so forth, might be needed and so forth, so on. The way our budget is structured and gets voted on, the Lakeville, the Lakeville, the selectmen's line item for wages is voted in total. Okay. So those numbers can be used for whatever purpose. It's not like saying eighty thousand dollars got to go to the town planner. Or whatever it happens to be. So from that perspective, until we evaluate, until he evaluates and makes a recommendation, then I think we're okay until whatever, even if we split that and say, oh, I'm just throwing numbers out here. You know, let's say it's forty thousand for the town planner, forty thousand for the, uh, whatever that position is. Okay.
Yep.
We still have enough money and then we can fund that money in the fall. Besides that, if it's something that needs to be done immediately, we can go to the finance committee and ask them for some funding out of the reserve fund and then put that money back in the reserve fund.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we don't undercut ourselves. So the math I was doing, um, was, you know, if, if we did end up coming in and saying, well, we think it might be three quarters of the year that they're here. If it was full-time, maybe it's not. Maybe we got to figure out if there's enough work for full-time or not still. Um, if we said three quarters of the eighty that was proposed, and if we kept the old salary of the previous position at three-quarter time, we'd be looking at about a hundred and six total for three quarters of the year. So it'd be, it'd be an increase of twenty-six thousand from where the budget was in our last review. So it'd be a hundred and six total. And I don't know if it's there or not, but those are the numbers in my head.
It really isn't. But like I said, you can do whatever you want to do within the selectmen's budget to decide, the selectmen's wages line item to decide what position you want to have. Now, if you recall, you know, we took some of that money from that other position and we hired a clerk. Okay. And that's worked out pretty well. Um, but I just think, Brian, there's ways to doing this, but I don't think we should go there yet until Ari has a chance to look at what the requirements may be. That's just me.
No, I certainly want him to be part of that, um, discussion for sure. That, that's no question. Um, Leah, I've been chatting a whole bunch. Did you want to chime in on anything? I'm sorry if I'm monopolizing this.
Um, nope. I, um, I do agree with Brian that I don't want to cut us short, but you know, I've already participated in a few times where we've had to go to the finance committee to get approval, to move some money around and gone to town meeting. So I know that those are, you know, um, viable options. Um, and we do need to put something in there. Um, I don't know where we get more than what we have there, but I, I mean, I'm okay putting a placeholder in there, like, you know, Mr. Chair said. Um, you know, we're kind of vote on the whole line item and then if we have to work it out after. But I do want to be sure that we have enough resources in the selectmen's office. So I wish we could put a little bit more money in general in there. And then wait for our, you know, our new town administrator to say, listen, I think this is what we need to do. I just.
I think, I think the only thing, if you want to do something like that, is that, that take the town planner and, um, let's say make it fifty. I don't know, just throw in a number of, okay. And then take, uh, uh, thirty of the eighty and put it into, uh, quote unquote, selectmen's staffing, whatever you want that to be. And then we can address it, you know, once he makes the decision and makes the recommendation and then, then we can adjust it. Cause I'm, I'm pretty sure, but right now, we have to go into town meeting with a budget based upon the estimates that we currently have. And I'm pretty sure that there will be some money available, you know, in the fall. Don't know how much that is right now.
Yep.
But if you want to, if you want to do something else, then we're going to have to take it from somewhere else. Um, so, you know, we got contracted services in there, you know, that we use. We got, um, money in there for, um, um, clerical, uh, for the floater. We got money in there for, um, secretarial, you know, services, you know, up and above that. So, I mean, that, that's all within the budget, you know, itself. And all that can be adjusted without going to town meeting. So I just think that he ought to be given that opportunity to, uh, to review it.
And even if we went down to fifty or so, I mean, if, even if that was part-time or if that role ended up being contracted for a little while, just to help us figure out what work is there for us to do. Um, I think that would make me feel a little bit better if we keep some back in the kitty to make sure we get the, our office staffing level where it needs to be.
Okay. So, uh, you recommending, Brian, that we do fifty for town planner and thirty for selectmen's staffing? To be determined what it's going to be?
To be determined and certainly revisited in the fall, once we get a better idea of how the numbers are going to shake up, shape up.
Oh, I agree. I agree.
Yeah. I can, um, I, I can get on board with that too. I think that way we cover both.
Okay. So, uh, any further discussion on that?
Nope.
I'll entertain a motion then to, uh, adjust the, uh, line in the budget for town planner to be fifty thousand dollars and, uh, add thirty thousand dollars for, uh, selectmen's staffing, uh, to be determined.
So moved.
Second the motion?
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Baby and I.
Day I.
The camera eye. Okay. Good. Thank you. I just.
Thank you.
Uh.
Do we need to slow down for eight PM? We're getting through these.
Yeah, we, we've got some stuff to talk about yet. Don't worry. Uh, it was a car accident, just so everybody knows. That's what the chief is. Okay. Now, okay. All right. This is a big discussion. As you know, the town offices, um, um, have been closed. The COA has been closed. The library actually has been open on a modified, uh, situation. Um, it's, it's going very well. So the question becomes, um, and I know there's concerns, you know, people are concerned because I talked to some of the people in the office today. But some of them haven't been vaccinated yet. So they're very concerned about people coming into the town office. Now, as you know, the way it's set up right now is that you can call town clerk's office or the board of assessors' office or the treasurer and collector's office and make an appointment, you know, to go visit, you know, do something. Now, we're discouraging that as much as possible because all of the tools and the systems that we put in place to do almost everything online, uh, has worked pretty well. You know, and, uh, so that all is still in place and we certainly would encourage people to, um, to continue doing that. So, um, we really haven't had a lot of problems. And if we just want to stay the way we are for a little bit longer until the mass vaccination, which is what, April fifth or so, um, you know, is out there, that's fine too. So I'm just, you know, because the governor is opening things and stuff like that. And even if we did this, it, because of the small area that we have with the town clerk, treasurer, collector and the board of assessors' office, it can only be probably two, three people let in at a time, which has to be managed, you know, as well. So just throwing it out there, um, council and AJ is, uh, reporting to Ed at this point and Kelly, they're going to stay the way they are right now for at least another two, three, four weeks until what they're going to do, because they're not ready. And the strict guidelines about participation, the number of people and so forth. And, um, the COA director is trying to, uh, do some outside programs, you know, with the tents, you know, that they have available. So we're not going to be discussing any of that. They have to come back with a different approach. So the library is open and what it is, and there's really no changes. There's been no changes recommended by the governor for the library and it seems to be going okay. So the question is the town offices. So we're gonna, I know that some of the employees are concerned because they're not vaccinated yet. I mean, they'll be scheduled to be vaccinated soon and do we just want to wait?
Um, I'd, I'd like to reiterate that I agree the library is providing a lot of services the way that it is. They don't have tables set up, which encourages people not to sit and stay. And that's working really, really, really well. Of course, it is a much bigger area than the area that services, you know, um, folks who are coming to the clerk's office, the tax collector's office and, uh, um, the assessor's office. Um, for me, I just don't want to wait to make the decision on April fifteenth, what to do. I would rather make a decision and as long as that decision still makes sense on April fifteenth, be able to, let's say, open some things up on that day. I don't want to just wait until then to make the decision, which now we don't make the change until the end of the month. Um, you know, of course, whatever decision we make today is dependent on what happens, you know, statewide. So I would like to see things open up because, you know, I've talked to a few people. They're like, listen, I know I can do it all online, but, you know, sometimes I just have questions and I like the visuals that. That being said, I had to do the same thing down at the Cape and for, um, you know, for our property down there. And it's very similar to what we are offering here. And, you know, Yarmouth is a much bigger community. So, um, it's almost exactly like what we're doing here. And I navigated it pretty easily without being able to go there in person. But I know that there are some folks that, you know, they like to come in. So.
Um, so you're saying the earliest we should open is April fifteenth, Leah?
Yeah, but I don't want to wait until April fifteenth to say, okay, when do you think we should open now? Like if we said tonight, let's plan on the next stage happening on, opening on April fifteenth. And of course, it takes into consideration what goes on statewide.
Okay. Brian?
The, the, the thing I struggle with is the actual space people come into is very small. Um, you're basically talking about a hallway that you stand in a few different places. If there's somebody at the clerks, you've got to go buy somebody to get to assessors or treasurer or anything. Um, I mean, I'm okay leaving it as it is for now and, and having a plan that says, all right, when we get to this phase or stage or, you know, vaccination percentage in the state, whatever it might be, saying, all right, that's our, that's our key to go into the next, you know, phase ourselves. But it seem, seems to be working, um, so far. I mean, I've seen a few folks struggle just to kind of figure out the online payments the first couple of times, but it seems like, you know, it's getting through the, we've got the burn permits up there now. People out there burning. Hopefully they got their permit. Um, but it seems like it's been going okay. Uh, it's just, it's a really small space. I mean, I, I don't know what we could put up as occupancy to be allowed in there.
Ed was saying at maximum two to three at a time.
So one per window, basically.
Right. Yeah. Okay. So I guess what we'll do then is we'll wait a little longer and then, um, we evaluate it and Brian will be gone and then we can make a decision.
I'll be the first one in.
All right. Is that what we want to do? Okay.
Um, yeah, I just know that, you know, people are saying, well, kids are going back to school and, you know, town halls still aren't even opening. I, I mean, it's, you know, the consideration of social distancing. Uh, it's a small space, you know, so. And that, and I am trying to take that, that, you know, into consideration. It's just, you know, I do feel bad for some of the, and they don't necessarily have to be older folks. There's a lot of younger folks who aren't tech savvy either, who, you know, really just like to come in and pay the bill and have it chink, chink stamp that it's paid. Um, even if they're giving them a check. So, you know, I, I, I've always been a little bit more, uh, less conservative in saying that, you know, I want things to open up, but I do want it to happen safely. So.
I think one of the things in the back of my mind too, is we're connected to the fire station and that's been one of my biggest fears is something happens to them. Even though most of them, if not all of them, have had their vaccinations now. It's not a guarantee that a hundred percent. And I would just hate to see something run rampant through them and then we're in a real bad position.
Yeah, we did. We did such a, you know, we did so much to try to make sure that they were safe for, you know, to be too eager here at the end. And I, I appreciate that. It's just, I do know that there's folks that are saying, you know, um, and I don't know what the reopening looks like Monday, Wednesday, Friday, to make sure it's going well before we're opening, you know, five days a week. I don't, you know, um, so.
Okay. Then we'll revisit it at a later date. Thank you. Okay. Uh, number twelve was discussion, open meeting law complaint filed by, uh, Patrick Higgins, uh, Patrick Higgins and Associates. Uh, January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one, the selectits meeting. Uh, basically he was saying that the meeting wasn't posted, which is not true. Uh, the meeting was, was posted and, uh, so, um, what I'll do is, um, respond to him and say it was posted through the town clerk's office. And, um, we will provide him, um, copies of the, uh, minutes.
I mean, is it?
This guy does this all the time. I'm sorry, you know.
Yeah. Is it that he want, he's looking for it to be in, in several places on the website? Is he looking for it to be on the town hall door? I mean, our primary posting place is the, the website now. So that's what we're doing.
But it's the, specifically the official spot is the calendar on the website, which it was there. It was posted.
Right.
It wasn't in the minutes and agenda section, which is more of like a historical repository.
Right. It was on the calendar and that is the primary location.
Yeah. Okay. So the, just so the board knows, uh, we're responding, we're required to bring it in front of the board to, you know, to discuss it, just so you know, that's why it's here. So, uh, we'll respond to that.
Okay.
All right. The, uh, the next thing, uh, where am I? It looks like I'm out of order here. No, here we go. And number thirteen, reviewed a vote to have the chairman sign a municipal contract, a serped, for the self-evaluation and transition assist, plan assistance. As the board knows, um, this was, um, the ADA, you know, survey that was supposed to be, uh, last year. And because of timing issues in COVID nineteen, we didn't have the resources to do anything. But, um, I found out that, uh, it was extended. But I found out that it was extended and to June 30th of 2021. And so I've contacted the, whatever they could, I forget they're called disability, something of the state. And they said that that was fine. So Serpents is going to be doing the work. And so attached is the scope of work and the statement of work. And so I would entertain a motion to approve this and have the chairman of the board sign it.
I'm moved.
Second motion.
Any further discussion?
I'd just like to say that, you know, the previous town administrator had, you know, brought it up and had asked me to put it on the agenda last spring. But there was a lot of craziness last spring with COVID and there was, you know, we were not sure about funding. And so this is, the study is done via grant, but you know, the work that may be determined that needs to be done, we can apply for grant money for too, but I just didn't want us in a situation where we were looking for more things that had to be funded if we were required to make any of the changes. So that's why I sort of backed off because we weren't sure. The numbers coming from the state were really bad on funding. So I just didn't want to get us into a situation where we were taking on more than our pocketbook could handle at the time. But I, you know, I'm really happy to be doing this. It was just a cautious move. But I, you know, I think, I think everything a year later here looks a lot brighter than it did a year ago. So I'm happy now that, you know, I know Brian pushed for this too a little bit. So thank you for that, Brian.
And I'm happy to see we're here as well, even if it's a little later. I think the the key thing here is that you cannot apply for the MOD grants per project. And I believe it's $250,000 per project you can actually get. So it's a significant amount of money. If you're awarded it, you can't get that if you don't go through the self assessment. So if you don't have the self assessment, if you don't have a transition plan, which I don't think they hold you exactly to it. You show, show some effort and goodwill that you are trying to get there. But this potentially does open up a significant amount of grant money for us. So this will be very nice to see this completed.
Okay, all those in favor?
Baby and I.
They are.
Okay, thank you. Okay, number fourteen is discussing vote and sign host community certification form for Boston Botanical LLC. I guess this is a form that the the town needs to sign and because it gets sent to the cannabis commission. So as you know, this has been about six, seven weeks ago, we approved the new, your new host agreement. So I will entertain a motion to, to approve to have the chairman of the board sign this host community certification form for Boston Botanical LLC.
I'm moved.
Second motion.
A discussion.
I just wonder if we, we, we voted on Boston Botanicals and Twisted Growers the same night. So I wonder if there should be another one coming from them soon as well.
Um, probably not. And I'll tell you the reason why is because Twisted Growers was an existing host agreement. This is a new one.
Oh, good point. Okay.
So there could be Brian, but I don't know. Okay, all those in favor?
Baby and I.
They are.
Camera eye. Okay. Next on the agenda is to request to allow Sunken Island Line Sprint Bike Race to use Lakeville Road on January 10th, 2021. I, I guess one of the things that I didn't see here unless somebody else saw, unless I missed it, I don't see the number of participants in this race. Did anybody see that?
No, I didn't see a total number.
I didn't either.
Let me just buzz through it again real quick and see. Oh, well, okay. Last page says the events typically average between 180 to 250.
Last page, Brian?
It's, well, it's page 72 in the packet I have, right? Last page, right before agenda item 16. It's the Q and A page.
Okay.
I can read it if I'm the only one with it.
I think you are.
So there's a frequently asked questions, a couple of pages says, lastly, we just want to say that organizing triathlon events is our business and passion. We have been competing in and organizing these races for over 30 years. Our events typically average between 180 to 250 athletes, depending on regulation this year. And per this plan, we will never have more than five to 10 people closer than six feet apart at any given time. With our experience, our events are easy to manage and we all have all of the necessary equipment to put on an event like this in a safe and effective manner. If you have any suggestions, recommendations, or questions, please reach out, reach out to me. We look forward to hearing from you. Thank you again for allowing us to use this beautiful venue for our race year after year.
Okay. The other thing that we haven't heard from the police chief, which is actually Sean takes care of that, the captain. So I don't know if you want to hear from them before we approve this, but up to you guys.
I'd feel better doing that. And maybe we can check in with the DPW director, see if he's had any thoughts on the street.
The other, the other thing, I know we got a list of streets and where they're going to go, but I know about you, but the map that I got, you can't see.
Same.
So, um, so if you want, we'll just postpone it to the next meeting.
Yeah, we assume the DPW director has seen the route?
I don't think so.
Okay. So I'd like to, I'd like to see, to get his opinion, just even if he just sends us an email saying, you know, the route will be okay with him.
Okay.
And what's not clear is the the letter says it's a single loop on the bike, but Tracy indicated it might actually be a double loop.
Yeah, I agree. I saw that too.
So I'm not sure if they're going to be on our streets for like a couple of miles or four miles if they come back twice.
It is, it is a double route. They made a typo in the letter. I spoke to Derek Savis about it.
Okay.
Okay. So we gotta get that, you gotta get that clarified, number one. Number two is if it's double, then I think the police chief needs to relook at this. I don't know how long this event's, it says two hours or so. I don't know. So does that mean it's four hours altogether or?
And like, would that mean they come through town, they do their couple of miles through Lakeville, like go off to the rest of it and then 30 minutes, 45 minutes later, they're back? I mean, I don't know if there's.
Okay, we'll have to get some clarification on this.
Yeah, I'd like to know too, what I, I don't know how they can enforce keeping people six feet apart, but if they have an idea, I'd love to know what it is.
You're gonna put a measuring tape between each bike.
Yeah.
They tie ropes together. There we go.
Right, because I just, you know, even before COVID, we've had a hard time keeping bikers from, you know, riding four or five people across. So.
Well, I mean, I got to tell you that that's going to be very, very strict and because the police department is very upset about that.
Yeah.
And we get a lot of complaints about that. And if they continue to do it, it's not going to be tolerated, you know, in the future.
Right.
It's up to them to manage it.
No, I know bikers like to ride in tandem. They like to ride however, but I mean, they're not four lane highways that we're closing down for their use. I mean, we're not closing down the, the roads for some other reasons. So.
This one's a small, this one's a small race compared to the one in August, which is over 1,000 people.
Right.
I don't know how it's worked with previous races, but I wouldn't mind if the organizers here let us know, at least in writing, like, hey, if the police call in three numbers and tell us we're DQing them, like,
Yeah.
you know, if they see a few biz numbers running next to each other or too close or doing something else, I think our, you know, police force should have the ability to issue a DQ by calling it in.
Yeah. And I think we, we actually asked what the other company that does races to come up with some sort of a, you know, a plan. So I don't think it's out of, you know, out of the question to say, you know, could you at least give us some idea of how you intend to keep the bikers six feet apart on the roads?
So this is the, this is going to be the third one. In a shot in two month timeframe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, excuse me, one in June, one in July, and one in August.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Okay. Just talking about a bike race. The, the last meeting, number 16, we visit the charities to receive donations from Sun Multi-Sport Events for the Patriot Half Marathon.
Triathlon.
Excuse me. Thank you. So they're going to be donating $1,500. And the way we left it at the last meeting was that we were going to think about some our own organizations, you know, is important to, to vote on what we're going to recommend for the $1,500.
So I've got one I'd like, go ahead, Leah.
Oh, no, you can go first.
So I would like to nominate Lakeville nonprofit known as the Farm and Community Collaborative. So they are right now in their second annual, what they're calling the Norishar Neighbors COVID-19 Hunger Relief Foundation. So they are trying to provide free of charge to families that find themselves with food insecurities during, due to the pandemic with free farm shares for 15 weeks. So the money, whatever, and I've already reached out to them and they said that they would earmark any donation that they received to make sure it goes to that effort and not to administrative fees to turn around and, and create those farm shares for any families that they identify.
So a hundred percent of the money we're donating is going, no, no administrative fees?
I will double check the language I got, but I believe that the answer was yes.
Yeah. What was the name again, Brian?
It's called Farm and Community Collaborative, Inc. They're in a partnership with Elliot Farm.
Okay.
Okay.
So yes, we could earmark the donation for the Norishar Neighbor, Neighbors fundraiser.
Okay. Leah?
Um, I just wanted to be sure some of our most important, not most important, but important groups for the town. The senior center always and the library have received, you know, enough before we start going further than that. I don't know when the last time was we donated there. We had money donated there.
Okay.
And they both have friends organizations, right? I believe they do.
Who?
The, the COA. What was the second one, Leah?
Oh, they have friends. Yeah. Yeah.
Sorry, the library.
They have the friends of the library too.
Yeah.
They have friends in COA and they have friends of the library too.
The library, yeah. I just want to be sure that, you know, in our desire to help a lot of people that we're still helping, you know, our, the, they, they get right to the children and right to the senior. So.
Okay.
I really like the farm idea, the Farm and Community Collaborative. I, I really like that because there was, I know I saw her on Facebook, I think it was the event that took place over the weekend with some food being donated to in Freetown. And it seems like it was necessary and well, well deserved by, you know, folks who have just, you know, found themselves with really bad issues because of COVID. So, you know, getting food on people's table is definitely something we should consider.
Okay. So you want to make a motion?
I'll leave that to Brian.
Do, do, do we want to do one? Do we want to split up between the couple? I'm open to whatever.
Oh, I think we ought to split it up. That's my opinion.
Um, so we've got three so far, right?
Yes. Oh, you have somebody else? That's fine too.
No, I just want to make sure I didn't miss somebody. That's all.
Um, we do have lots of love in Lakeville that's been providing a lot of aid to the families that have lost their homes in the recent fires. And they also provide Christmas for families in need and they're doing Easter this year as well and Thanksgiving meals. So that might be a local charity to consider also.
Okay, I would I think we ought to try to focus on the ones we got personally because all of them have been hurting. And I know that, you know, like the COA, you know, some of their programs, you know, need additional funding and all the additional programs that have been funded at the library before. I'm not, well, first of all, there's been no fundraising that's been done pretty much at both the library and the COA that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
And they've used tons of donation monies that they had available in the past to keep some of these programs available. And you just saw the the corned beef and cabbage at the, at the COA, huge success, huge. You know, and that was all done, you know, with, with donation money. So, and it was free for the seniors, which is really great. And I think they, I think they, what'd they say? 135, I think they served somewhere in there. So that was big. So those don't, those don't come cheap. So, you know, I'm just saying, that's my opinion, but.
And there's another opportunity coming. So in the, the letter for the on your left race that we were just discussing, they do have in there, it says, lastly, we will be donating a portion of our race proceeds to a town charity. If you have any suggestions as to a local charity, we will appreciate that info. So there, there may be another opportunity coming.
All right. So, so somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I was just getting all their names kind of on one screen here. So I could say that. Yeah, right. What's the name of this race? Ah, there we go. All right. I'll make a motion that we split the $1,500 donation from the Sun Multi-Sport Events for Patriot Half Triathlon. Three ways between the following, Farm and Community Collaborative, Inc. in Lakeville, Massachusetts. The Friends of the Lakeville Council on Aging Incorporated in Lakeville, Massachusetts, and the Friends of the Lakeville Free Public Library, also in Lakeville, Massachusetts.
500 each, correct?
Yes, 500.
Okay. Second?
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Baby and I.
They are.
The camera. Okay, thank you. Okay, I know Brian can't, can't wait for this because we have to schedule the April meetings prior.
I will say, I, I will say, look at his influence. This is the only piece of paper I have tonight.
Oh, geez.
Brian?
Wow.
I'm all, I'm all techno here.
There you go. Okay.
Influence on me, Brian.
I mean, I'm almost, I'm free any night in April, so.
So I would, the election is on April 6th, April 5th, excuse me. So on April 6th, we should hold a meeting to reorganize, number one. But number two, on April 6th, the Senator Rodrick's has put together a program, a state, a state program for economic development that he wants to present to the board and the town. So that was going to be on April 6th at 6:30. So we're going to have a meeting anyways. So then we could probably start at six o'clock and do the reorg or whatever.
Sounds good. Yep, April 6th.
Now, the next meeting, I would suggest that it would be, excuse me. I would say the 12th and the 26th. And the reason why I'm saying that is because, you know, we've got some work to do about getting some stuff done, the Warren's done and stuff for town meeting.
Yep. We have to have the review too, correct?
We have to have the review too. So my guess is the review would be on the, be on the 26th.
And I intend to get you guys at least a draft of the RFP for IT services before I'm gone.
Oh, good. Thank you. Cause we're going to get that out too.
Mr. Chair, are we going to meet with capital expenditure?
All right, I'll schedule that separately. Yeah.
Okay, so we're looking at April, the election is the 5th, correct?
It is.
So we're looking at the 6th to do the reorganization and have Senator Rodrick's do his presentation, correct?
Correct.
Uh, so then what was the second date you said? The 12th?
The 12th and the 26th.
And then the 26th. And that gives us a week in between if we need to add anything. Because it is going to be busy.
All right. You okay with that, Brian?
I think so. Those seem pretty sound to me. Yeah.
Yeah, he's going to be posting pictures of Cooper in the chat.
He's trying to distract you.
Yeah.
Okay. Next on the agenda is Mastio T. Okay, next on the agenda is, uh, Mastio T Design Hearing for Route seventy-nine redesign. Um, this is the, what they call the twenty-five percent design hearing, where they take final input in about the project, so the design is now twenty-five percent complete. And so what they will do is they will hold a live, uh, meeting, live hearing, on April thirteenth at six thirty PM. To provide updates on the project and timing, hopefully, um, and have anybody who wants to give any input. We will be, um, posting this meeting. And, uh, also, we, uh, plan, or I plan to have, uh, the, uh, notify the abutters on all the abutters on seventy-nine with a letter, you know, about the, uh, the meeting itself. Okay?
Yep. So that'll be another meeting for us.
Another meeting, you don't have to go, but I think it'd be nice.
No, but I, I think, uh, you know.
Okay, uh, just a quick update on the budget, um, uh, I think we already, we discussed, you know, our concerns about some of the items that we wanna adjust for our budget. Um, so basically, you know, where we are is, as you know, we're gonna have a meeting with the Park Commission at eight o'clock, um, to discuss, you know, their budget. Um, the first thing we're gonna be discussing is the, uh, the Boston Tavern Agreement first. Um, I met with, um, the Boston Tavern and Mike Nolan this morning, and so I'll give an update, uh, of what was discussed and hopefully we can come, you know, to some type of an agreement and, uh, move forward with this thing, cuz, um, we gotta do something one way or the other, so I hopefully that everybody will agree to what's being proposed. So as far as the budget is concerned, um, Darren Beal from the Finance Committee and myself, um, attended, uh, Old Colony, uh, meeting, and, um, basically, the number that we were proposing, um, in our budget is the same number they're proposing in their budget, and that budget will be voted on, on Wednesday night of this week. Freetown, Lakeville Regional School District, uh, Darren and I attended a couple of meetings, and, uh, the numbers that they were asking for were way out of line, and we told them that in the first meeting. They came back with a different proposal, and, uh, it's in line what we're proposing, you know, in our budget, and they're voting on the, uh, their budget on Wednesday night as well, so hopefully those two things, uh, will be resolved, and then we can start the process of putting everything together. Um, a couple of things that are important in having to do with the school budgets, and I know I'm gonna confuse you all. There's what they call Ursa one, Ursa two, and Ursa three, you know, funding that's coming from the state. The first one, we already got, it's a small amount of money of like thirty-six thousand dollars. The second one is, um, almost nine hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, and that money is supposed to be used to reduce the local contribution, uh, to the towns, okay? So, of course, you gotta be careful, it's easy to say that you're gonna do that, but then you're gonna worry about next year, if you do that, then where, where are you gonna get the money from? And, um, and so forth, so what they were proposing was to use one-time items for capital items that have been on the capital plan to improve the, uh, the, uh, buildings at the region, okay? And I said, okay, that's good. But what about Assawamset and Freetown Elementary School? They didn't provide any funding, for any part of that funding to be used to make improvements at Assawamset, and we know that, you know, in that particular case, it'd be about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and we know things need to be done at, at Assawamset. So, um, they agreed, and so what's gonna be done is they're gonna be putting together a list of things, um, along with Nate's help, cuz, uh, he's been involved in, uh, those projects and the study that's been done and so forth and so on. And the important thing here is, is that this has to be voted by the Board of Selectmen, which was very interesting. So, you know, it's gonna be coming back to us and honor for us to vote on it, because we have to decide how the money is gonna be used, which is a good thing. So, um, you got the same situation with Old Colony, Old Colony is only about a hundred thousand dollars, and with five communities, it's about twenty thousand dollars a community, they're actually going to take that money and reduce the, uh, the assessment, they feel that that's fair, and it's not a huge amount of money. So, um, that's the story on that, um. Oh, and then the, the capital plan, once again, we gotta know where the capital plan is, and we're still waiting for the, um, we gotta finalize this with the Park Commission tonight, cuz I wanna meet with the Capital Expenditure Committee, so we can view this stuff and, uh, make sure that everybody's on the same page, and we know that there's some items in their capital plan that they haven't provided us the proper information yet. Okay, any questions?
Go ahead, Brian. Question on the school one, on the items that come back to the selectmen to vote on, is that a, is that a joint meeting between Freetown and Lakeville Selectmen, or does each get to vote on their individual pot of money, how it'll be used?
Yeah, each town gets to get voted on individually.
Okay.
Which, which is great as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
Then we can say, we wanna do this, we wanna do that, we don't wanna do that, you know?
Yep.
So.
Nice.
Mr. Chair, how do you spell Ursa? All right, wait a minute, what is it?
E-I-S-N-E-R.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
E-I-E-I-O.
Yeah, I don't know why they called it that, they did.
It must stand for something.
I'm sure it does, don't ask me.
We know, we know Selectmen Fabian is not a fan of acronyms.
All right, so, um, see, Brian, we only got ten minutes for, for that.
Yeah, I can fill up a little bit, um, going back to announcements, I completely forgot to announce the, uh, uh, March thirtieth, uh, workshop of the Upper Namasket River Enhancement Plan, I'm looking at it over here. Wait a minute, where's my glasses? That one's far away. Um, so I know it's been posted on the town's website, and there, we are looking for people to participate. The Zoom link is right there, so a lot of the folks who live around the water and have concerns since the flooding issues back in two thousand and ten, and, um, you know, a lot of folks just think it's, um, that not a lot of attention is paid to the boards on the dam. I, I think if you attend this meeting, the Zoom link is attached, you could also, if you don't wanna participate via Zoom, you can watch it. Um, Face, uh, Lake Cam will be airing it, and I think people will be surprised at how much work has been done on researching, investigating both the dams, the dam that's, um, right there at the, uh, at the end of the pond that starts, goes into the river, and also the other dam in Middleborough. Um, it's gonna be a really, really very informative, um, lot of collaboration on this from a lot of different people, environmentalists, um, employees of the town, different towns, and, and there's lots of people working on this, uh, Lakeville, Middleborough, Freetown, New Bedford, Taunton, representatives from, you know, I just think that it's in everyone's best interest, especially if that's one of concerns, was the flooding to join in, and the links are on the, um, it's on the, the town's website. Um, I don't really think I can read this that closely to be able to give it out, but it's definitely on the, uh, the town's website.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Just to follow up with, um, Selectmen Fabian's comments, um, the Midover DPW Building Committee is evaluating the reuse of the Midover DPW site, and there was discussion about the Vaskyl Dam, um, at the river, and, um, they're looking into possibilities of, um, you know, cleanup efforts around that part of the river, as well as maybe looking for funding to talk about removing the Vaskyl Dam.
That's a completely different issue from this, so.
Right, it will help, anything will help, that's for sure.
No, but this has nothing to do with this particular project, so the pedalbar has gotta pursue that on their own.
Oh, yeah, we, but, but, um, because we've done so much of the research and everything, not we, uh, all these, you know, really, um, talented people have done all this research. Uh, and I think, you know, a lot of folks will remember the, this originally, originally started with a hundred thousand dollar grant to do research. So, um, you know, a lot's been found out, um, problems have been identified, and because we've done this in a the proper process, hopefully we'll be able to continue to get grant money to try to work on some of this stuff, but this is definitely the public outreach meeting that's required, and they really, they are, you know, really going all out there, so I, I hope people can, you know, weigh in and get some really good, accurate information, they're gonna share, they're gonna share it all.
Okay, um, just give a quick update, you know, on some of the projects, you know, that we're working on, um, as you know, there's a major project, uh, going on with the, um, the old library and the renovations of the library, they've, uh, made significant, uh, progress in, um, just the last, uh, three weeks. And, um, the, um, building has been completely cleaned out, um, there was a lot of stuff that was left behind by the, um, Lisi and the prior Lisi, especially in the basement, and all that stuff was, uh, thrown away, and, uh, the walls and the ceilings, um, have all been, uh, painted, and, uh, the air conditioning units, the old air conditioning units have been removed, and, um, so, um, um, all the counter space that used to be in there has been removed, you know, as well. So now, um, they're planning to, um, start framing the handicap bathroom, so making progress in that area. Um, and I know that, um, Nate Darling, the, um, Facilities Manager is, uh, trying to get some pricing and some timeframes on the, um, the, um, the handicap ramp and so forth, so there's been a lot of progress that's been made in that area, of also in the, um, upstairs in the training area, uh, in the fire department, you know, the walls have now been painted and the doors and so forth, and next week, the kitchen is going to be, uh, renovated and improved upon, so, um, we're doing good. So, did we lose, did we lose her?
Need to go up.
I was, I thought I lost you.
No, I'm here.
Okay, so does anybody have any questions on any of those projects right now?
Do we have a, a, a rough ETA when we think we might be able to actually occupy the old library?
Um, the, the big question, Brian, is can we open it without the handicap ramp, which according to Nate, he says we can. I'd certainly like to get it in place, but the problem with the handicap ramps, it's probably at least a twelve me, well, twelve week lead time, you know, to get it installed, but there's no reason why we couldn't open it, you know, without the handicap ramp. Um, so, if we can, then we could probably get that ready by May first, the latest.
That'd be nice.
Very nice, yeah, and then we can start the renovations for the fire department, once we get the money from town meeting on May tenth.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so, um, I see at least three members of the Finance Committee and Darren, uh, let's see, uh, what do we got here? We got three anyways. So Darren, you wanna call the Finance Committee meeting to order, please?
Sure, I'd like to call the Lakeville Finance Committee meeting to order at seven fifty-four PM. Uh, George?
Here.
Larry?
Here.
Darren Beal's here.
Uh, so maybe somebody else will show up in a couple of minutes?
Yeah, Adam Lynch, Nate, you showed up.
Paddy?
Adam Lynch might show up.
Okay, um, so we got a few minutes here, we're gonna wait, we gotta wait for the, uh, the, uh, Park Commission. So if anybody wants to take a quick break, we, I mean, it's five fifty-four, they should be showing up any minute here.
I will run and do that, I'll be right back.
Me too.
Okay. All right, so Brian, Leah, you're back. Um, so who's the, uh, co-chairman of the Park Commission?
It's Mike.
Mike.
Okay, um, Mike, is your meeting still in order? Is your Park Commission still, uh, in order, or you have to call them to order?
Say it again, Mike, Mike, you hear us?
No, I just, I just, I just came on.
Did you, did you adjourn the last meeting, or are you still in order?
We adjourned it.
Okay, so, uh, Park Commission, you're gonna have to call the, uh, meeting to order, please?
Okay, do I have to go through the whole, uh, rigmarole?
No, just, just who you are.
Like to call, okay, so I'm calling the Lakeville Park Commission, uh, meeting to order at eight oh two.
And Mike Nolan is the chairperson?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
I'm Vice Chairman, Mike Nolan.
Excuse me, Vice Chairman.
And we have, uh, Jesse Bedford, Joe Koshia, um, and, uh, and, uh, Nellie Woodburn, our clerk.
Hello.
Okay. So I, I assume that, uh, that was a motion and it was seconded by, uh, somebody?
Yes, second.
Thank you, Joe. Okay. All right, and let's see, um, we also have, uh, oh, Paul, did you forget Paula, Mike?
Is Paula here?
Yeah.
I am.
Yep, she is.
Hi, Paula. Oh, the big P, okay, so you, yeah, true.
All right, and I think we have, um, Tim Melon, Melis, how you say that, Tim?
Melonowski.
Thank you.
Yeah.
From, uh, Boston Tavern, uh, on the meeting as well, so we can, uh, discuss kinda where we are. Uh, I think that's it. Okay. So, um, as the Commission knows, and the, the board and the, uh, Finance Committee at the last meeting, we were gonna be, um, discussing further, uh, the Park Commission budget, so we could try to get it all finalized and so forth, but, um, and we're gonna do that, but I think the most important issue right now is to, um, to discuss the, uh, proposed, um, contract, uh, with Boston Tavern, um, so we can all get on the same page as to what, you know, needs to be done. And so, um, everybody should have a copy of, um, uh, let me take a step back, um, Mike Nolan, uh, Tim and I met a week ago, and, uh, um, Tim expressed some concern about the charges for the rental fees, um, and they thought they were high, not for the event management, not for the event fees, but primarily for the wedding. The weddings, the other ones are pretty much in line, you know, what, what he's proposing thereabouts, may have to be adjusted a little bit. Um, so he expressed some concerns about that, so Mike and I said, why don't you put something together and put it in writing and, uh, send it to us, and then we can, uh, look at it and the Park Commission can review it to see what they think and so forth and so on. So, um, and we did that, and of course, there's been some concern about what's being proposed. So, um, Mike and I, uh, I met with, uh, Tim again this morning and, uh, tried to understand, you know, his, uh, philosophy as far as the pricing is concerned, and, uh, so, um, we wanna talk about that. Um, one of the things that was noted, um, that Nellie provided us, that there really has been three different price changes in, uh, three years, um, having to do with the, um, the weddings. Um, I believe they went from, uh, what, fourteen hundred dollars to twenty-three hundred dollars, Mike, somewhere in that area. Somewhere in that area to thirty-three hundred, so there's a significant jump, you know, in a three-year period. So, I guess, does everybody have, um, Tim's, uh, proposal in front of them?
Yes, Rich, let me, can I interrupt you for a minute? We, uh, we, we did all have it, and we did discuss this already at our meeting, and we took a vote, and we, um, decided that, uh, unanimously, unanimously, that the, um, Park Commission would like to move forward with Boston Tavern.
Okay, then you're saving me a lot of time.
I, that's why.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Why didn't you say that at the beginning, Mike?
While you were talking, I didn't want to interrupt you.
I was trying to get everybody up to date here.
Um, yeah, I was trying, as I, as I, we spoke with, uh, Tim earlier, we're trying to, you know, just understand the whole difference in getting to the same place, but in a different way. And I think, um, I think, uh, we looked at it and I, I, I believe that we're confident, uh, we hope we're confident that, um, that Tim can, um, come through on these projections and, uh, if he does, we'll be great.
Okay, thank you, that's good, good news. I'm glad we're back on the right path here. Um, just, um, sure. Um, Mike and I reviewed the draft contract, you know, with Tim. Where is my draft contract here?
Yeah, Rich, I haven't seen a, any draft contract.
No, I, I'm sorry, you and I talked about the contract that I had, Mike, and I said there was some problems with it, the need to be fixed before we sent it out to everybody, because everybody would have questions, you know, on that contract. Um, so, um, just to highlight that quickly, that, um, um, basically, the contract was supposed to say that, uh, Boston Tavern would be, uh, responsible for all the cleaning services, you know, in the building, so we would no longer be responsible for that, um, because what we did in the past, we charged the fee and then the fee was, um, contracted with an outside contractor to do the clean service and we don't want to do that. And he's fine in doing that, he will charge a cleaning fee and that's up to him for what it should be, but that's okay. The other thing that's in there is the kitchen said that it was a, uh, a preparation kitchen. And actually, it's now going to be a full kitchen, kitchen. So he would be responsible to make sure that, uh, that kitchen is up and running and functioning. And also we're responsible to make sure that he maintains, you know, that kitchen from border health inspections and there's other kinds of inspections that have to do with the, um, the, uh, help me out. Thank you, thank you, Tim. Um, so, um, and that's good, so he's agreed, you know, to do all that. And then, which is pretty standard, that if there's any damage done in the building during any of these events, he will be responsible to repair any damage in that building, which is, which is good, that's fine. Um, is that it, Tim? I don't think there was anything else to remember.
That was it.
Okay.
A quick question, if you don't mind, um, I had reached out back to attorney Rich. Um, so I don't know which version you're looking at, but there was a section 5.1, uh, he had added, which is a background check. Is that in the version you have?
I mean, core checks?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, the only other thought I had was on the repair maintenance you were speaking to, which, um, I'd asked about. Um, should the language just say that make sure that repairs are, you know, of like material or better? That's all.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, so my plan, unless Leah wants to do this, Leah, you know, you'd been working on the contract with Kim. Tim, I'm not Tim, Mark, is to update the contract and then get the draft out to both the, uh, selectmen and the park commission and then Tim?
Yeah, it doesn't matter, Rich, um, we can figure it out tomorrow if you want. I just want to be sure I'm looking at the right version, too.
There's only one version.
Okay.
That I know of.
Okay, the one that I sent the other day, correct?
Right.
Okay, all right, okay.
The plan would be to update that and then we would, um, get that finalized as long as Tim, you know, agrees to it. Uh, and then we, the board of selectmen, uh, will hold a meeting to get that agreement signed as quickly as possible, because every day that goes by, we're losing opportunity here, because people are calling wanting to rent the facility. So, um, I don't know if the board, you know, well, first of all, we'll send it to the park commission and the board, anybody's comments, then we'll look at it and Tim's and so forth. So maybe we shoot for either Thursday or Monday to try to get this contract finalized.
Um, yep.
Leah?
Yep.
Brian? Brian?
Brian's muted.
Did you say Thursday or Friday? I'm sorry.
Thursday or Monday.
It was your Monday.
I can do a Friday, too, it doesn't matter, it was to me. I know you want to do it at night, so.
Yeah, Friday I can't do afternoon, but I could do evening, Thursday looks pretty good. And Monday, Monday, I think Monday night works.
Okay, so. Sure, Mike, go ahead.
I'm sorry, could I ask that someone, even if it's somebody, uh, from the, uh, the park commission, um, um, sits in on that meeting and goes over that, uh, contract?
Absolutely, you all want to come, that's great, no problem.
Okay, and only because we're, we're more familiar with the day-to-day operation, as you know.
Yeah.
I'll be glad to do it anytime in the next two weeks, so.
Okay, and you're gonna get a draft ahead of time, Mike? So you can make all the comments you want? And then we'll do a final one and take Tim's comments, if there's any comments that he wants to do and then we'll, uh, we'll hold the meeting and everybody can attend if you want, it's fine with us, we don't care. And they all want to attend, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Sorry, I have a barking dog.
Okay, well, that takes care of that issue. Uh, thank you.
Hey, Rich, one more thing, since we pulled, uh, we dragged, uh, um, Tim out here to, uh, plead his case and really, we've already kind of decided on it. Um, Tim, is there anything that you'd like to, um, uh, address, uh, both boards here? And just, um, give us an idea of what you told us and?
Yeah, absolutely, I appreciate the opportunity. Um, I am very excited, uh, for the partnership with the town of Lakeville. You know, nine years in Middleborough and it's, uh, it's been a pleasure to work with the town of Middleborough. That's, that's the, um, probably the shining star to, to our business right now is it, is what we've developed, uh, with Middleborough High School, with the YMCA, with the Little League Park, with all these different things. Uh, you know, our business, um, development has been based upon these relationships. And the growth has been exponential because of this. We have, you know, little kids that, you know, write about us in their, like, homework and things like that. And we post it in the restaurant and they see it. I guess the point is that I'm looking to make those same ties in Lakeville, um, in this, uh, facility. And I think if we can combine, you know, uh, taking care of the town and then making a really high-end, uh, wedding facility, I think we'll all be very successful. So I'm looking forward to the partnership more than anything else.
Okay. Um, Mike?
Yes?
Did, uh, the park commission actually, uh, vote on these proposed rates or does that still have to be done?
No, we voted on the, the, the proposed rates, um, the way they were, uh, uh, except that, uh, we did mention that the outdoor fees would remain the same.
Okay.
Um, and, um, if you, during the, um, during the, um, contract negotiations, if it needs to be, um, a little bit of a difference made or whatever, I'm sure we can discuss that. But I, I think we're all in the same ballpark, we're all, um, looking forward to this at this point and getting it, getting it rolling.
Okay, good. All right, uh, anybody else, any questions on the Boston Tavern or we all set?
I just have one question, uh, Tim, what is your position at Boston Tavern?
Uh, I'm the general manager and the operating owner of it.
Okay, thanks.
Um, I just want to say that I've spent a lot of time with Tim and I, uh, I feel like we're in really good hands with Boston Tavern. So I will not apologize for my crankiness when, in the discussions we've had, um, hoping, uh, or trying to get this mission to, uh, to, to happen. So, um, I, I think we're in very good hands with, uh, Tim and Boston Tavern. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, so let's go on and, uh, talk about your fiscal '22 budget. You're welcome to state, Tim, but thank you.
Uh, yeah, it sounds, it sounds delightful, but I think I'll bow out. Thank you, folks, I appreciate it very much and I look forward to working with you.
These things have fun sometimes.
We look forward to working with you also.
Thank you.
All right, um, Mike, did you want to say anything about the budget yet or do you want to?
Well, that, that part was the easy part.
Okay.
We're, we're a little bit stuck, uh, we're split right down the middle as far as, uh, whether we, um, I think one of the questions you asked us and you wanted an answer was whether we want, uh, Clear Pond Park to remain the same or to be open, uh, to only residents and, and guests. We're gonna, we're, we're stuck because we can't figure out how we're gonna fund it if it's, if it's just, um, if it's just, uh, residents. So, um, I try to explain, I try to, you know, we had a very brief discussion about this earlier. And, um, I tried to, um, express that, um, it's not, if, if it is open to, um, residents only, it's gonna be a loss. That particular profit center is gonna be a loss.
Well, our budget's gonna be fine.
Well, that's what I was saying, yeah. Um, so I like that, I mean, you sent us, this, this budget that you sent us, this was something that was prepared by you and Todd?
Correct.
Okay, um, okay.
Do you want to talk about the revenue numbers?
Uh?
Want to talk about the revenue numbers first, how we came up with the revenue numbers?
Yep.
Okay, so basically, as we agreed the last meeting, that between, uh, the rental fees and the, um, the, uh, monies we're gonna receive from Boston Tavern now, um, conservatively, and based upon 2019's numbers, that between those three numbers, we're gonna come up with about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, I think it is. Hundred and, uh, yeah, so that's what we came up with. Okay, so Todd feels comfortable about it, you know, believe me, there's some unknowns there, there's a lot of unknowns that could happen, that those revenue numbers may not be made because of COVID-19 and so forth and so on. We don't know, okay, but we gotta start with a basis and trying to be as conservative as possible, that's what we used. Okay, and that's where we ended last week's, last meeting, two weeks ago. Right?
Right.
Okay, so is everybody on the same page as far as that's concerned?
Yes.
For this year, and it's gonna increase in fiscal '23. Hopefully, if it does a million dollars worth of business, well, I'll be happy. Right?
So will.
Okay. So does anybody have any questions on that, that 1:30 I'm talking about for this year now? This is '22.
Rich, does that 1:35 include, uh, that's just for Lakeville residents, doesn't include, uh?
It does, just for Lakeville residents, right?
Okay.
Yeah. You gotta read, you gotta read, excuse me. Bye, bye.
I was just gonna ask the, um, I need to break out my, my, uh, book from the other night where I took notes, that 11:725 on the season passes, was that just the resident passes from Lake FY19?
Um, the way we calculated this is that, and I think this was discussed at the last meeting, is that we're saying a minimum of a hundred season passes at eighty dollars a pass. Okay. That's what we talked about. And then fifty, um, guest passes at eighty dollars a piece. And we'll explain how that may work. That's how it comes up with the 11,00725. And I think, I think that's a conservative number.
I get, I, I hear you say, Rich, and once again, um, I, I, I don't see the need for residents only, so, um, that's what we disagree, obviously, um, I just don't see, the, how we get into a thing that, we're thinking that all sorts of people from Lakeville are gonna start going to Clear Pond all of a sudden, that they haven't gone to already. Um, I think it's way off base to even think that, um, I think it was gonna be a huge loss to Clear Pond, probably twenty, thirty grand loss, um, compared to past years when we maybe lost up to ten thousand dollars if you go just Lakeville only. And then what's gonna have, what looks it's gonna have to happen is start cutting things that people want at the park. Uh, that's where, that's my fear is. Um, but I, I do have one question, I, at the last meeting we had, I, I, I mentioned to the people under your park commission, and maybe, maybe I misunderstood, but I want to clarify with you, so. I think you said that the town would, would fund either some or whatever, a portion of Clear Pond or capital projects, but we wouldn't do both, is, is that correct?
We're gonna fund a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in capital projects.
For the park commission?
Yeah, a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars.
Okay, so we have a list.
We know.
Well, we do, we mentioned four big ones last time, we did, you know, we, uh, it was the tennis courts, it was the, uh, Clear Pond, actually, yeah, not, not Clear Pond, excuse me, it was the haunted house, the office building and John Pond. So those were talked about like, yeah, I don't know if, I think it was a little shy of a hundred thousand dollars, so maybe we got more money to play with.
It's a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars.
Okay, for those four?
Uh, I have to get my sheets out in a minute, but we're gonna talk about that, too. But the town, the town is committed to doing that.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's for those four.
Okay, so my, because my point is, and we can get into it, is we would be crazy to say no to the power, to the capital projects, but I don't want to say no, because, well, we have to throw money towards Clear Pond. I think it would be crazy going down that road, so I don't see how we can do both. So I guess it isn't either or, right?
No, it's not either or, because based upon the revenue numbers and the expenses that are talked about here, you can do both.
I don't, I don't see that, but.
Okay.
I'll listen on.
Joe, are you saying if the, like, Clear Pond revenue falls short, then you feel like we're gonna have to be subsidizing that?
I, I guess with all the unknowns, my opinion is go after the capital projects, they're long overdue. You know, the haunted house, the tennis courts, the office building, John Pond, way overdue. And don't cut Clear Pond like you want to do to go residents only, that's a huge what-if. And I think it's, it's, I think we need to get on that path right now. That's all I'm saying is, I don't want to have to have, go back to the town and say, hey, you throw us forty thousand dollars because of Clear Pond. It might come out in the wash, but someone still putting forty thousand dollars in that we, we didn't need to incur, that's all.
I, I, I don't see that, Joe, and the reason why we don't, I don't see it is because we no longer have to pay an event management fee of forty thousand eight hundred. We no longer have to pay in the cleaning service of seventy-five hundred dollars, that's almost forty-eight thousand dollars you're gonna save in your budget.
That almost pays for Clear Pond, just in the numbers of the last meeting.
Yeah, but what about saving for a rainy day? I don't want to, I don't want to have to go down to zero, you know, like they put that forty-eight thousand in the bank for us. And why, why, why throw it away on an idea that could kill Clear Pond?
Well, you still have, Joe, and we're not using any of that money, you still have the, um, the, um, what do we call it? Like, uh, the free cash, uh, you still have a surplus of sixty-one thousand dollars from, uh, last year that hasn't been used yet, which you normally use for capital projects. We're not asking you to use that, we're asking you to save that.
So, so that, um, a hundred and eighteen thousand wouldn't, uh, include the, uh, the sixty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-four coming out of our retained earnings?
No, not at all.
Okay, well, this is, this changes my outlook on it entirely, um, if we can do both, I say we go for it. Um, Paula, you had a, a point about safety, did you want to share that with everyone?
Yes, I can't seem to emphasize enough that with COVID, we do not, we don't want to bring in outsiders at this time. And I want to protect the people of Lakeville, the residents, the community, because we don't know where these people are coming from on the outside, whether they're in a red zone and they're coming in and, you know, I know Joe thinks there's probably nothing wrong with that, but I, I am strongly against non-residents at this time until COVID is behind us and we can address it next summer if we need to go there. And that's why I want residents only. And I think the fact that you put a, 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 uh, a board out in the, what is it, the, uh, out in the middle of the lake there and the pond with a cluster of people on it couldn't be any more unhealthy at this time. And that's my issue, and I don't think we're taking it seriously. It's not about the money, it's about the safety of the community.
You do realize that the governor has opened up the state, bars and restaurants are open, so you have people all together. And to assume that people could be outsiders are gonna be bringing in the disease, a virus, the virus. And to assume that people could be outsiders are gonna be bringing in the disease, a virus, the virus is here. So I think we gotta be careful saying that, we don't want outsiders to bring in the virus.
We are also dealing with the research, Joe. The virus, the virus is not, it's mutating, we don't know what's going to happen. And I don't wanna take that chance.
Can I add some question, Joe?
Yep.
If, if, if it's a, it seems to me like it's not strictly a monetary issue with you. Um, if the, if the board of selectmen is, is going to fund these capital projects and our budget can be balanced as-is, what, what other issues do you have that um make you not wanna have it uh residents only?
Well, I, I think if you look at history, if people go there, um, I know um some people who used to run the facility, um, a lot of people from the other toes, o, o, outside Middleborough, neighboring towns, they like going there, they like bringing their grandchildren, it's a thing they do every summer to go to Clear Pond. They don't hurt anybody, they enjoy coming to our, to Lakeville, because we offer that to the people around us. Great service, that's what draws people to Lakeville, to say, no, we're gonna put a wall up, no, nobody else from Lakeville. I think it sends the wrong message. You know, same thing, are we gonna start limiting people from Ted Williams? Outsiders aren't allowed? I'm not, I don't like that, I don't think we have to go down that road. It just, I, I, you know, I don't think it's a good thing to do. It's a great park, Clear Pond, I think you'd beautify it somewhat, but that's for a different day. Um, but I think we have a great place there, people like going. And I, people, you're not gonna get tons of people from Lakeville just going there all of a sudden, because, oh, no more outsiders, I don't see it. So, why not let, excuse me, let me people enjoy who enjoys. They're not hurting anybody, now we're gonna tell them, hey, guys, no more, we don't want you anymore. That's just bad business. That's all I'm looking at, that's all.
Well, in response, Joe, we're not saying we don't want you anymore. We're saying for this season, it is better to be safe. And what I'm trying to say is if you talk to people in Lakeville, which I have, they wanna come back to Clear Pond. And the reason why some of them have dropped out is because they got too many outsiders. So to think that Lakeville people are not gonna come to uh Clear Pond because you, you know, um, because they don't want to is, is wrong. They want to come, but they don't want to share it, obviously, with a lot of non-residents. And I think that the Lakeville people have a right to be heard.
But in the same breath, Paula, you don't wanna have that raft out there, if you wanna keep people, people love it, you don't care where they're from, even Lakevilleans like going out to the raft, now you're gonna tell them you can't go out there? What are we doing to ourselves here?
You don't say you can't go out there, you just don't put it out there.
Okay.
All right.
No, I guess my point is, again, your point, my guess, I don't want to have a, a big loss of money, I think it would be, if the town wants to spend it, they could spend that money elsewhere else. I mean, that's what I think, yeah, yeah, you could give us forty grand, put it, put it to something else in town, we can put it to the schools, oh, whatever. But I just, the, so it's a dual purpose of my, of my point, is the money loss as well as the exclusionary type uh a, attitude we're gonna have to the outsiders that have done well, come here and they shop, they come to our restaurants, but we're not allowing them to use the pond, that's all.
It belongs to the taxpayers of Lakeville, Joe.
Yeah, yeah, we share. I go to, I go to Middleborough to use their facilities too, and I appreciate it, so.
Well, you know, most of the communities, if you take the Marion's and the Westports and all these communities, they're very restrictive on who they can use it, and one of the other problems that was experiencing there was overcrowding. Parking lot was full, you know, people parking in the street, you know, damages were done, you know, to the buildings and the facilities, and you know, we're trying to make a huge commitment here, Joe, we put a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars into parks last year. And we're putting a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars into the park this year. We wanna see those um, these, these parks, and there's been major improvements, as you know, since Franklin has taken them over. And I'm selfish, okay, I'm a taxpayer of Lakeville. This belongs to the taxpayers of Lakeville, and that's what it should be used for, that's my opinion, Joe, so.
I, I, I hear you, I appreciate your opinion, we differ, obviously. Uh, I, and I, I, again, I, I appreciate the town putting money into the town without a doubt. Franklin and them have done a fabulous job without a doubt, no one's, no one's debating that. My point is, we have a, a beautiful resource that we don't wanna share with anybody else. So what's next, next year, we're gonna close off Ted Williams?
No, that's not true, Joe, because the leagues, they're all leagues associated with the, the rentals and stuff like that, this is different. I mean, people walking in off the street from anywhere can use the facility, and I just think it's wrong. I mean, you know, the upkeep of that place has been a major problem for years. You know, and we're trying to make improvements to that facility, and you know, that's just me, and I, I I'm sorry, I, I think it should be Lakeville residents.
And, and there are Lakeville people here, so have you used it when you were younger? Did you like the fact that we had to share it with every other town? I mean, I think that um you know, the people of Lakeville want to use their own pond, and I've heard it again and again and again. But if it's about money and we can't afford to keep it open, I guess we go non-resident. But I don't think it's about the money, and, but I do think it's about the health of our community for twenty twenty-one, and I can't say it enough.
Can I ask a question? Um, so do we have a set number of memberships that get sold? Or permits? A hundred?
And that was what was sold to Lakeville residents in, in two thousand and nineteen, one hundred. And that's why the number that was put together was a conservative number, using the same numbers as two thousand and nineteen.
Okay, so, sorry, I missed that, so if we don't sell a hundred, do we take the loss or do we open it up to other residents?
No, the plan is, is to open up, it's, it's like any other budget, Leah. You know, you put the budgets together, you put together your estimated revenues of what you're going to get, and sometimes those revenues fall short, or sometimes they're higher. In this particular case, having to do with this enterprise account, we're bearing very conservative on the revenue that we're gonna get from Reynolds and from Boston Tavern, based upon the first year, which is three hundred thousand dollars worth of revenue versus he's projecting a million dollars worth of revenue in fiscal twenty-three, which is a significant increase.
Right. I, I mean, I'm just asking the questions because I've heard both Joe's side and Paula's side from people. I know people who liked it when it was just Lakeville residents, they could bring a friend from somewhere else, but the friends, if they didn't live in town, um couldn't have like a pass. So I, I've heard it, you know, I've heard it all ways, um, I just just asking the question if we only sell fifty, which I doubt we will only sell fifty, but um, if we wanted to open it up to anyone else.
Do we have, uh, do we have uh a certain amount of guest passes for every household in Lakeville, or is it a, a limited amount, or?
What was, what was being proposed here is that somebody can buy a guest pass for that household and give it to whoever they want, whatever, a car or whatever it happens to be.
How many, how many passes?
Well, I just use an S for revenue purposes, I just said fifty for revenue, it could be a hundred, I don't know.
Now, per household?
Yeah, no, not per household.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, are, are you going to limit the amount of passes per household, or can you buy five if you want five of your friends to come?
Well, it's not based on five, it's, it would be based upon uh giving that pass to a carload of people that they can go to the park.
Okay.
Okay, not one individual pass at a time.
Okay.
That would, that would become a nightmare to maintain. This is just my idea, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm a hundred percent in favor of taking this back to the town, I've, I've complained about it for years, you know, quite frankly, and when my kids grew up, you know, we all went there as a family. You know, my wife went during the day, and at night I'd meet him there and would have dinner there and cook a barbecue and stuff like that, so I just think it's a place that is important to everybody. That's just me, Joe and I get a difference of opinion, and I respect his opinion.
If I'm to throw my opinion out, you know, I respect the parks, this really comes down to them. I think this year of all years is the one we take, you know, a bit of a risk and say, let's try it residents only and see how it goes, who knows, maybe it flourishes, maybe people are so sick of being cooped up in their houses that they're just dying to get outside and do something, and, and maybe that's, you know, an opportunistic point of view. But I mean, as a resident and a taxpayer, I look at Clear Pond as something that should never be closed or unavailable to me, it should always be available. I, I mean, I think it's in some ways sad that we had to close it last year, you know, obviously the pandemic, but because of revenue not being available because of the pandemic, but I think there's a plan here that, you know, we try it, see, see what happens, maybe it doesn't work, and then we, you know, figure something out later and adjust, maybe, uh, maybe don't tear the haunted house down until next spring. And we just kinda hold back and see how things go. But uh I don't, I don't see a reason not to try it, it's worth it to me.
May I add something? Chairman?
Yes.
Um, Joe, I, I, I hear where you're coming from, and um I know that there are a lot of folks that grew up at Clear Pond um, and, but no longer live in town. I know there's a number of people from East Totten and uh Middleborough and this, uh, you know, all members of the friends of the, the Clear Pond Park. Um, and it would be, you know, devastating for them not to be able to go there. Um, but if we, we're talking about selling a certain amount of guest passes as well. Um, so I think, I think personally, it sounds to me like that would um alleviate that problem, but um you wouldn't have these huge influxes of people from all over the place coming in on um Fourth of July and, and, and um, th- those type of things. You following?
You know, I hear what you're saying, and, and I, I've heard people say, oh, we've had some parties on the weekends that have gotten out of hand from uh other towns, and, and that's, that's probably our fault for not you know, taking action. You know, if you don't like the parties, don't invite them, don't let them come back the following year. Um, Rich, you mentioned that, I also mentioned, oh, Fourth of July, that's the biggest day, I think that's the time that we had a problem with parking on the street. Other times, they don't park on the street, they're always parking in the road, I mean, in the parking lot, unless they're unloading for something and we don't tell them, hey, you can't park there. So maybe we need some signs, but again, um, I've heard a lot of things that, oh, the bad elements are coming in, but we allowed them to come in, we didn't discipline, we didn't go over to them saying, hey, you're out of here, so maybe shame on us. But whatever, whatever it be decides, I mean, I'm not gonna spend all night, you know, debating it or, you know, defending what I think, but that's just my opinion, that's all. Anybody else have any opinions, uh, Darren's on, is it George, Larry, anybody?
Yeah, I'm happy to chime in as a taxpayer and a resident, also as we all are, um, I, I have a different opinion, I, I really don't care to see us funding it again like we have, like we've had to in the past. If there are certain times of year that we think that it's excessive and, and unavailable to the rest of the public, I, I can't imagine that every single weekend we have this problem where all our resident, all, all our residents are trying to get in and, and they just can't because it's, it's too much or past capacity. I think that the majority of the time we're not, um, we're not close to it, and I understand that there's certain times of the year that we are. But for us to have a um, I, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm failing to understand the reason, because I'm hearing two different things, I'm hearing the pandemic and I'm also hearing we don't want um undesirables coming here, and it just seems like we're, we're excluding for the sake of excluding, and we're not, uh, we're not opening it up, and as a taxpayer, my primary responsibility is to ensure that the, the that, that the park is profitable and, or at least breaking even like it's supposed to do, and, and not to fund it again the way we have in the past, and I think that it's, it seems excessive for us to just close it up to and, and open it up only to, to residents, that's just my opinion.
Open it up to who? I'm sorry, I missed your last comment, uh, George.
Um, my last comment was uh, I am for leaving it as is.
Leaving it as is?
Mm-hmm.
George, can you, can I make a comment, um? The um, since I've been on the, the commission, um, the, we've never had to be any funding from the town to run that, it's always been self-sufficient, uh, this past year was the first year.
Right, yeah, I, I understand, yeah, of course.
In two thousand and nineteen, it was a loss, it's twelve thousand dollars, we, we funded it, but it was a loss.
Not your total budget, Joe.
No, but just the park itself, I mean, you'd like to just break even on it.
Your total budget had a substantial surplus in two thousand and nineteen.
Right, but I'm just saying, that money we get will be used for other things, and now we, we don't have it, there's a COVID, I'm just saying, that you'd like to see it break even. You're not gonna break even with Lakeville, I don't think.
So does, does that mean that uh every item on here as far as um you know, other areas and the hall rentals and group outings and everything needs to break even if you don't make your revenue numbers?
No, because your hall, your halls can take care of it, you already talked about that, the three hundred and thirty thousand, a mil- million, that's all set, I'm, I'm only talking about Clear Pond, I don't wanna get on different paths, so if, you know, again, I'll, I'll be quiet after this, I'm just saying, I gave my opinion, that's all.
Okay.
Others can speak.
I think that um going with just residents also allows us to cut in other areas um on the Loon Pond budget, and I know we discussed this a little in our previous um, we've got eight attendants. And the town, as my understanding, is gonna clean up Clear Pond. And just cutting some of these these items will reduce the budget so that we don't have uh well, the snack bar doesn't need to really be open, we don't need eight attendants, we don't need eight lifeguards, we do need at least seven, okay? But that's taking money that, that takes money um that can become, that can come off the overall expense, and I think that I had figured out we could shave it by sixteen thousand dollars, and we were looking at, what, forty-five thousand or something like that? So everything considered, I mean, if you even took fifteen thousand off the budget with, I, I rounded out the lifeguard's average salary, I, I looked at the um the attendance eleven sixty an hour in nine, in two thousand and nineteen. Um, I looked at the snack bars, what we put out for food, and the fact that you have to get somebody to maintain it, there's an employee there. So you, you do cut back on the help, and especially with the park, with the uh town's help with maintaining Clear Pond, I mean, you've got them emptying the trash, you've got them uh cleaning up the park, fixing it up, we don't need attendants to pick up pieces of wood or, or whatever we're doing, yes, we need them for the bathhouses and all that, and that's important, because they have to be cleaned once or twice a day. But what else are we going to uh use eight attendants for, I, 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 I don't know. So I, I recommended five, and I, and based on that, and um I did base it on six lifeguards, and I uh not having the snack bar, um, I know we, the last time the food was we allotted two thousand and forty-five hundred at the end of the summer was what we paid for the food, and then you pay for the electricity in the snack bar, it's gotta be a hundred dollars for the season. I mean, so you're eliminating forty-six hundred dollars right there, add it up, it's, you know, that's, that's money, that's money that we're putting out that we don't need to, and we're cutting down on the expense. And I know we're not getting a lot of revenue in because we're not taking in non-residents. But even with the residents, we are able to cut our costs. And so it might even out. I'm not the CPA here, so.
I think one of the things I'm struggling with understanding is why we would keep Clear Pond Park closed if it would be quote-unquote a loss for that individual park, I mean, it's the Parks Commission, not the Clear Pond Commission and the Ted Williams Commission. I mean, if our choice was to close Clear Pond, because Clear Pond wouldn't work out as well as we'd want it to, means zero residents get to use it, again, for another year. Um, I mean, I think we're looking at it as a whole, I think it's, it's a worthy venture. Um, I get what George is saying, you know, we don't wanna throw good money at a bad thing. Um, but if this wasn't an enterprise account, then it was just part of our normal general fund, and I would expect it to be open, that's something I'm paying for.
And that's what we wanna do, we wanna keep it open this season, and hoping that we don't come to another bump in the road, it should be open. But we're being careful about who, about opening it, and Protecting our resi- residents health-wise and also trying to cut the budget back a little bit so we don't. You know, have to pay for all this extra stuff. And, uh.
Well, from what I'm hearing, Paul, we don't have to cut back anything. I mean, we're going to have the town funding us here. Um, we might only give up, we can give up money to everybody comes in the park as well. Um, you know, again.
Are you saying, Joe? Are you saying, Joe, you don't want the capital money?
I, I believe me, I want it. That's the, that's the first thing I want.
You know, we've heard, we've heard about that, you know, and as I said, this both boards, this board committed a hundred and eighty-five thousand last year. And we're committing a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars and it ain't coming out of your budget.
And we, we want it. We're not complaining. I'm not complaining.
You know.
I'm saying thank you right here and now. I gladly want those capital projects done. The whole town does. So I'm not complaining about that.
And there needs to be capital items that need to be done at Clear Pond. If we're going to put money into Clear Pond. I think we want to try to protect it and preserve it and, you know, rightly so, and do the maintenance or whatever. Um, and for the town residents, not for everybody his brother to come off the street and use it. And that's me, my opinion, Joe.
I mean, I, I, you, we, we, we have agreed. I agree. I would go the other clear, I, I'm glad. I think we should clean it up without a doubt, and I think we get capital projects. I just differ on the residents, but. Whatever else decides, we don't need to go all night long on this one.
We had a, I think we had a question from, uh, or we had a comment from Facebook that popped up. I don't know if anybody had a chance to see it. I, I think it said something to the effect of, uh, I'm not sure who it came from, so I apologize, but if you're able to pull it up. It was something to the effect of, um. Uh, I, I think probably some sort of compromise where, uh. Non-residents are allowed. I think it said one month, I'm sorry, about one week per month, but I didn't, I didn't see it when it scrolled through, so I don't know if anybody else did.
Yeah, it's out there on Facebook. Uh, could you do one week, weekend a month for non-residents? Um, how would you control that? Yeah.
Um, Mitch, I believe, uh, Mr. Beals had a question. He wasn't able to.
I'm sorry, Darren, I didn't see you.
With all of us, uh, arguing here.
No, it's fine. It's just my two cents worth. So from a financial perspective, obviously we'd like to break even or make a profit, right? Uh, um, in this situation, but I think if you factor in all the unknowns going into this year, COVID, unknowns. Maybe this is the year to, in, in the, uh, board selectmen has funded it and, and has budgeted for it. Maybe this is the year we, we leave it for just Lakeville residents and see what happens. And maybe it's a huge success and the towns rally around it and we end up doing better than we expect. And at the same time, we're keeping a little one, everyone a little bit safer. And at the end of the year, if it didn't work out, then we reevaluate for next year. That's just my opinion.
And I agree with you.
I think, I think, uh, one of the suggestions was lowering the, the service quality by eliminating some of the, some, uh, some staff. Because we won't, we don't think that there is necessary, but. I, I was trying to figure this in my head, how that would all play out. So if we, we go down to lifeguard or if we go down to less, uh, people and the quality or. The conditions degrade as people are there throughout the course of the day. I, I just don't think that that's our, our cost savings right there. I'm not, I'm not by any means suggesting. Closing it down completely, but if you close it down completely, it costs you absolutely nothing and. You, you, you don't have to spend any money. You don't have to worry about breaking even or anything. So again, I'm not suggesting that, but if that's really. What our ultimate goal is. It's, it's, it's a service that we offer. If we don't, if we don't think that it's safe. Um, then it, it's not safe. So, so we can't just arbitrarily say, well, it's not safe for. Outsiders to come in, but it's safe for us to be at a hundred percent capacity of our own residents. It, it just seems. We're, we're talking out of both sides of our mouth here and it just doesn't make rational sense what we're saying. We're, we're saying. We're not capping the number of people that are allowed to come. We're just saying we don't want anybody from the outside come. We can have. All eleven thousand residents coming in. To spend some time at, at, at the, at the pond. But it just can't be anybody from anywhere else. And I think that's a little, we're, we're being a little. I, I think we're making excuses for, um, for not wanting other people. So let's just call it for what it is and just say, we don't want other people. Fine, let's, let's just agree on that. But let's not say it's because of COVID. So let, let's just stick to one, one story.
I still defend my position as a health worker and I say that. If we don't know where the non-residents are coming from, I would rather not take a chance.
But do we know where the residents are coming from?
Home.
I mean, they live here, but we, we're happy because COVID doesn't stop once it hit, once you hit the Lakeville border.
No, but, but we have a community that has COVID under control and we, we're not having a surge. And I don't want to see a surge and I don't want to take the chance of people coming in at this time. For the two thousand twenty-one season. And risk the chance of driving up our COVID members and people getting sick. If we can avoid that, I think we should.
So as, as a healthcare worker, do you also recommend that we, we put a cap on how many people are allowed to use a facility at any one time?
I think that, uh, there is some, uh, guidelines, um. As to how many can use the beach at one time. And that's another thing that we have to deal with is. How are we going to count the number of people that are coming in to use the beach? And if we're only allowed a hundred or a hundred and fifty on the beach. Then I would like to see that they're. Residents of Lakeville.
Yeah, I think that's, that's, uh, probably a little more. In line with the, the guidance that we've seen around, whether it's schools or, or what, it's. You know, obviously you have to have a certain. Distance and, and we, we have limited space in that.
Yeah, and we, we have to do all that. We have to space out places on the beach. So we're only allowed so many. Um.
There may not be a requirement after July fourth, but right now it is a requirement. Yes, if you open it, but.
So I, I have a question. So if we sell these family, uh, these resident passes. And I'm assuming it's per household, is that correct? So I have a family of four or he has a family of six or whatever it may be. So you bought your season pass. And you go to Clear Pond with your family for the day and you say, sorry, there's a hundred people here already. You can't come today. How's, how's that going to work for the consumer that just bought a season pass?
Get there earlier.
Larry, that's a very good, that's a very good question. It's something we did look at last year. It was a consideration, um, that we made. We, you know, we made, um, some preliminary. Um, plans on laying out the beach, you know, with different quadrants and, and such. And one of the questions that came up was that very question. How do you? Uh, I think Nellie, our clerk, um, goes there often with her children and she said, I would feel very, uh. Angry if I spent a hundred dollars on a, a season pass for my family and I drove down there and pulled in the parking lot. I couldn't. Go to the beach. So that would be something that would absolutely have to be. Worked out and worked on, um, whether it be a reservation type thing or. I, I'm not sure, but that question did come up last year.
That's regardless of whether we're doing residents or non-res, in non-residents, right? That's just the world we're living in right now.
I, I can give two actual real examples for that. So. We have a, a membership to Buttonwood Zoo and we also have a membership to the New England Aquarium. Both cost a decent amount of money and right now, and we just went to the zoo last week. You have to go on their website ahead of time and choose a timed ticket entry, regardless of your member or not. If you're a member, it doesn't cost you anything. But you still have to have a reservation and then show up to use the facilities. Once you're there. They currently allow you to stay as long as you want. So, um, New England Aquarium, you know, we wanted to go last Friday. We got on the website, zero tickets. Doesn't matter if you're a member, doesn't matter what level membership you have. Sorry, can't come in. You gotta go and, uh, reserve something like a week in advance or something like that. So we did and we had to pick a time that was available. And like, um, like Darren just said, did we like it? No, but we understand that that's currently the operation we're living in. And we got tickets next Friday. We'll go and have fun.
I, I think that's, that's great, but the, the question is, does the, does the parks department have the capability of doing this reservation? Am I going to have to drive down to, to Clear Pond and make a reservation? You, you can do it online. Yeah, I can make a reservation in the restaurant online or I could call. But how are you going to facilitate that for, for the parks? How are you going to say? Okay, you have a reservation for Saturday at twelve o'clock for your family of four. How, how do you, that, that's even more infrastructure. Someone's going to develop a, a system. To, uh, to, to make the, do the reservations.
Or it's first come, first served, right? It's first come, first served.
And, and, and don't they do that, uh, Mike or Jesse, when you had this, um, park. Clear Pond running before COVID, if there were like two hundred and fifty people showing up, did you let off two fifty in?
The only day would even really come into play is Fourth of July weekend, really, um. And, you know, I, I don't think they turned anybody away. Um, there was no parking, so they parked illegally, but they didn't turn people away.
That's a different, you know, it, it was a different time too. There was no COVID. We would definitely have to have some sort of infrastructure in place to do something similar to what, uh, Brian is, uh, experienced. Um, and that would be more. Um, I don't know, uh, you know, uh, where we're coming out with, having less, less staff there would be more staff that would have to, to do that. It's not, you're not talking about a ton more money because, um. You know, it, they're, they're. Kids and they're making eleven forty an hour. So it's not a, a ton of money, but. I think the, the, putting together some sort of a reservation system would be difficult unless. I, I guess we could contract somebody to do that, but. Um, I don't think anybody in the, 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 the parks commission has, has the, uh, ability to do that.
Their phone, not concession. This is not, one second, Brian. This is not a resident versus a non-resident question, right? This is, should the park be open at all? Right? We've kind of gotten off what we were talking about. Um, I guess that's a bigger question, right? Are we, are we even able to have the park open?
Well, the way we're trending, it looks like we'll be able to open it. And according to Ed Cullen, that's going to. That decision is, uh, up to the park commission in terms of.
It's up to the Board of Health, it's not up to the park.
Okay, um, uh, maybe we were discussing something else that was up to our decision, but.
Well, I mean, it's up to the park commission to open it or not, but it's up to the Board of Health to decide what the guidelines are.
Yes, and he said they were going to be the same until further notice in terms of, you know, how. Far apart the, uh, you know, twelve by twelve and, um, et cetera, and masks on the beach. Still.
That's what the guidelines say right now.
Yeah.
They're not doing that in Miami though, are they?
No.
I mean, last year the guidelines were so strict when Ed's, because I, I think I attended that. Meeting. I mean, he was talking about grid patterns and only so many people and it was determined that. I, I forget what a small number of people that would have been allowed. And we, all these same concerns came up with, well, then why are you selling passes if you know you can only let thirty people. On the beach at one time and grid patterns, because each grid had to have walkways and I don't think we're there. I think the. I think this year there'll be, you know, more, more people allowed, but of course, all this is subject to, you know, whatever. You know, conditions the Board of Health puts in, the health agent, but, you know, I don't, you're right. This conversation right now is more of how do we do it? With COVID, not really a, you know, is it resident versus non, non-resident membership? So. I mean, who makes this official call? Isn't it the park commission, resident versus non-resident?
Yes.
I don't, I don't think it's, um, a question with the park commission of whether we open or not. I think we were, we were planning. On doing whatever we had to do to, to get it open. The question is far as, um. Resident versus non-resident, um. I believe, um, it has, it's different for each one of us. Um, for me, it was strictly based on. The funding, whether we could fund it or not. Um, I, Joe, it's more of a, um. Social thing, right, Joe? It's like a.
Can I just interrupt for a second, Mike, and just say that? I think the fact that one person isn't saying, that's it, let's vote, means that you all really do respect each other's opinions. There's a lot to be said for that, but I think a decision has to be made. And we're not getting a ton of feedback in the chats, people, you know, one way or another. So. Uh, I think that the, the park commission. I mean, there's only four of you here. I hope, you know, you can get a vote without a tiebreaker, but.
Okay, well, we can do that. We can call it for a vote. Uh, anybody want to make a motion whether we, um, uh, close it to only residents?
For the summer, for, for two thousand twenty-one, yes. I, I make a motion for residents only at, uh, Clear Pond.
I thought we just, we had that at our meeting, Mike.
We have. I'm sorry?
We didn't vote on it at our meeting.
Well, we, we, we took a poll. We, we said it was split two and two.
Um. Well, um, I changed my mind, so. So, uh, do we have a second? Okay, well, I'll second the motion. Do we have discussion? The motion is to keep the park open only for Lakeville residents and guests for this year. Anybody in the park commission have any discussion one way or the other?
I think we've given our opinions enough.
Say again?
I think we've given our opinions enough.
Okay, so, uh, having said that, um, I, a, a yes vote is to, uh, have it residents only. Um, Paula, what's your vote?
Residents only, yes.
Okay, Joe?
No.
Okay, Jesse?
Nay.
I'm sorry?
No.
No, okay. Well, I would be a yes, so we're, we're still stuck.
Hi.
But, um.
So you didn't change your opinion, Mike?
No, I was leaning towards being a nay, but. Uh, if it's going to be funded, I, I think we, we could do it.
So then.
It's a no, isn't it?
Okay, so then the park commission has decided that they want to reopen it for non-residents too. You need to take this budget, revise this budget and get back to us, uh, soon as possible. You're the only budget that hasn't been finalized, you know, at this point. So you need to look at the revenue numbers and come back with, uh, projections. On what the revenue numbers need to be and, um, also, uh, look at the expense items. Um. So when can you do that?
Well, not, I'm not, I'm. I got two weeks left. Somebody else is going to have to pick up the ball on that if they want to redo the whole budget, so.
And I hear that Scott's not available, right?
Um. You're holding up the town's budget, so you guys have got to make a decision here. So I would suggest you meet. As soon as possible, no later than the next Monday, so you can make a decision what we're doing. And I came back with my proposal, you know, that I think is a reasonable proposal. But, okay, you guys decided you wanted to do that and that's okay. Um, uh, just going on, I have a couple of questions about the, uh, the actual budget itself, especially the, uh. Expense items, um. The, um, understanding the sixteen thousand dollars for the groundskeeping supplies. Uh, which I understand is the fertilizing, is that correct, Mike?
That is correct.
Okay, do you have pricing on that?
We have history of pricing from several years.
Pricing, it's over ten thousand dollars. We need to get quotes for that.
Even if it's, um. Applied in two separate, the spring and a fall application and it's two separate bills.
It's one contract, right?
It's not a contract at all.
Well, that's another issue. It needs to be a contract.
Well, whatever. Um, okay, you can tell whoever.
That's number one.
You, uh, they can do that. I'm not going to get into it.
Okay, wow.
I will tell you that I put the, um, the company that, um, that has done that for us in the past in contact with. Uh, Frank Moniz today. Um, I don't know if they talked or not or walked the fields, but, um. It'll be, it's actually. it'll be, it's actually, you know, he's handling that now, so I passed it off to Frank.
Okay, that's fine, but he's gonna require, we're gonna have a contract, I can tell you right now.
Yeah, Franklin's with us, I think.
What?
Was with us.
Is he with us?
There he is. Frank, are you there?
Yeah.
So, um, I guess they've turned this over to you, Frank?
Yeah, that was one of the things we had talked about. Um. And I did talk to the guy today. He's supposed to meet me later this uh month, next couple of weeks.
Okay, is he putting the contract together to do this?
I haven't even, we haven't even gotten to that. All I, all we're gonna do is walk uh walk quick, he's gonna just tell me what he's doing and then um, or what he's done, and um, we'll go from there.
Alrighty, thank you.
Yeah, I saw you, Franklin. You can't hide.
All right. Okay, um. The ball's in your hands. Okay, let's uh, let's talk about the capital plan items. Okay, um, so the first thing on there was the haunted house, so did the um uh, what happened to me? What happened? Um, did the uh Park Commission vote to uh uh demo the haunted house building?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, uh, the last time we met, uh um, somebody was gonna provide us the, how you came up with the twenty-eight thousand dollars for the tennis court repairs and paint, and you were gonna review that with Frank. Did somebody do that?
I got a quote uh la- last year. Uh, I did speak to Franklin, but he doesn't deal with that, his people don't uh it's a special company that does uh the tennis courts and basketball courts. Um, so it's not something he would be involved in. A company I got is someone that does tennis courts in the area. Uh, they've been to Lakeville several times, like they've given us quotes in the past. I didn't share it with anybody I can, there's like five different options, uh ranging from eight thousand up to twenty-five thousand, I believe. So I can share that with the boys like me, no problem.
Well, depending upon the amount, Joe, if it's twenty-eight thousand dollars, we're gonna get separate quotes for all of that, too.
We'll be separate quotes for.
We have to get three different quotes.
Okay, I mean, but we have to take a look at the options. I guess that's what the point is. So whatever option we pick, to your point, maybe we have to, yeah.
Um. So, when is that gonna be done?
I can send it to you guys when after this meeting.
Okay, but I'm talking about, you know, uh Frank is responsible for anything that's outside the buildings, okay, including the repair of the tennis courts. And if he's got a project that he has to manage, then uh it needs to be discussed with him. And uh we need to find the best course of action, because uh, quite frankly, Joe, I've dealt with tennis court repairs in the past, up at the schools, and you gotta be extremely careful of the companies that you're using to make sure that it's done right. So, um. Are we funding this project this year or not?
You tell me.
No, you tell me. I need, we need information. We don't have anything.
But again, you, the thought was, um, I I thought we talked last meeting, those are the top two you had, haunted house and the tennis courts.
Right, and we didn't, we didn't get any. You said you were gonna send us stuff. We didn't get anything.
Right, I didn't give you the quote yet. I didn't know I had to go to three of them, but I can get three, but we have to pick an option, so I get a some input from someone else and which option they want to choose. There's different things that could be done to the courts.
All right, um, so this repairing the tennis courts and painting the courses, campaigning the the uh courts themselves, how is that gonna affect pickleball?
Right now, we have a letter out to pickleball, um stating they not gonna be getting the con- giving a contract till they redo the painting of the courts.
Um, the place was packed, the place was packed today, Joe.
I'm saying they don't have a contract. Anybody can use it, but they don't have a contract.
There were twenty people there accounted.
I don't control the place, don't plan on it. I'm just saying they don't have a contract to play, so um maybe we get a cease and desist order, I don't know how else we're gonna handle that.
Do we have a lock?
We can lock them.
Let me, let me lock them.
Okay.
There was a lot of people there. There was more than twenty, I could tell you.
I counted twenty as quick as I could, but uh they, I I figured it was a group or team, but I didn't know that we had anybody playing at this time of year.
So if we repair the tennis courts, Joe, and paint them, what does that mean to pickleball then?
What do you mean? They're off the courts at the time. You know, I don't think you'd do it now. I think you'd probably do it in the fall, but I don't know what the timing would be.
No, no, my question, Joe, is is painting the lines is just this tennis lines, or does this have to do with pickleball lines?
The, the, the way we left it before is court number one is for tennis only. Court number two is a dual purpose. It's tennis with dotted phantom lines for pickleball, and court three is all pickleball, not tennis. So that's how you'd paint them.
Okay. All right.
Did they swallow you guys' money for repairs from what they did last year?
They, they paid about nine hundred dollars for repairs.
They did, okay.
Yeah.
And they covered what they did?
They they covered just the pickleball area of the areas of the of the courts.
That wasn't repairs, Joe. That was to play there, though, wasn't it?
Well, that was their goal to play there. They they filled in the cracks where they would be playing only. Yeah.
So I would assume then that this company that's gonna do this work better go out and look at it again, because if they patched cracks.
No, they saw it since, they saw, sorry, but sorry about, uh, they they saw it since the cracks were repaired.
Okay. All right. Um, next on the uh one is the repairs of John Park, you know, building, twenty thousand dollars. Um, it was my understanding, I could be wrong, and I think Nate is on here, that uh twenty thousand dollars isn't gonna do what needs to be done to that building. Right?
What building? I'm sorry.
The uh, the old bathroom there, the old building.
The storage building, yeah.
Uh, Nate, are you there?
Yeah, Rich, I'm I'm here. So, so the twenty thousand dollar number that we talked about was relative to just taking off that rear section uh that had compromised masonry. Uh, the blocks have shifted um about up to about an inch and a half off of a mortar joint. So it was just to make the structure uh safe from the exterior, um, but not to repair the roof or the holes in the floor or anything else to the main park. That's just to take off the rear section.
Okay, then the question is, um, that building has got some serious problems for repair. Why do this and repair the building at all instead of tearing it down? Just asking the question.
So, Rich, if I, if I may, um, I do agree with you that the the main part of the building that would be saved, um, it wouldn't be handicap accessible. Uh, it would be all right for you know, storage, stuff like that, but it's not accessible, so you'd never be able to actually use it for the public.
Okay, so does it make sense to look at it and say, okay, it's gonna be twenty thousand to tear the back part of the way? I think we all, I think we agree that needs a new roof, if I'm not mistaken?
Yep, it definitely needs a new roof. There's rotten trim work. Um, the rafters are starting to rot, and there's actually holes right in the floor.
So, yeah, and then there's holes inside the building that need to be done and and so forth, um. Um, so wouldn't you want to evaluate that building and say, okay, uh, maybe if we did fifty thousand dollars, we could put a building, a new building up and tear down that old one. Don't you think that should be looked at?
I know if you're asking me, Rich, that makes a lot of sense.
Okay, Park Commission?
Guaranteed. We we we're on board with that, yes.
Okay, so then we shouldn't fund the twenty thousand dollars for this, this, this year, then?
It would cost significantly more than twenty thousand dollars to tear that building down.
I don't know, Mike, you know.
So we'd have, we'd have to get estimate, we'd have to take, tear it down and put something in its place, right?
Right, and you need a building that size, Joe, is another question.
I mean, it's something we can talk about with Nate. I mean, if you wanna put a building up, maybe we put it down on on a lower level with the access and put bathrooms in there.
Okay, so we're, we're talking uh two major, two major things here. So, uh, should we hold on this one then till fall, till we can evaluate where we're going?
I would say that uh that depends on whether Nate thinks it's, it it should be um made safe. I mean, that twenty thousand dollars, Nate, would that make it a a a safe building with children around?
So there there would, I I think we could, we could wait till fall, um, even on the rear section. Um, what what happened, uh, we can go take a a look at it. There's actually holes in the roof in the rear section. Uh, water is coming in, rotted out the floor, and uh I suspect that water got in the blocks and froze, and that's what's caused the shift in the, in the concrete blocks. So that back addition is the one that's really bad. It probably could wait till fall. That's the twenty thousand dollar number, because you gotta remember, it's kind of like we talked about with the haunted house. So if you take off a portion, you got a wall that's open. Um, so if we take off the rear section, you're gonna have the rear wall of what's exist, you know, what's being uh kept wide open and needs to be framed in and secured. Uh, I feel pretty confident that the twenty thousand dollar number will get it to a place where it's secured. Uh, but to Rich's point, um, what what would be the anticipated use of the remaining uh building? Uh, if it was for storage, like uh historically, um, I believe the softball folks had stored, you know, uh, uh bat, the bats and balls and backstops and netting and all of that other stuff in there. It could continue to be used in that capacity, and I feel pretty comfortable that it would be structurally sound. The the masonry uh foundation on the, on the original portion is in good shape. It's just all the other wood around it. Um, like I said, the the floor joists, the rafters, roof needs to be done. Um, you probably, I I mean, it's, it's really tough to ta- to say because of the procurement environment, the construction environment. Um, what we see for bids, I mean, we saw it with the drainage at the parks. I mean, bids came in between thirty thousand and two hundred thousand uh for one drainage project at the uh Ted Williams camp. So, you know, if if somebody's wanting the work, they might be able to go in there and and maybe do all of the, the demo aside, the twenty thousand for the rear. There might be another twenty thousand uh to get that, to do the roof and do some of the um, you know, the patches in the floor. But that same twenty thousand dollar number for the repairs could turn uh to fifty if if somebody wasn't interested. We didn't have a lot, a lot of bidders. Um, we do see a lot of people just say they throw crazy bids out there. If they get it, so be it. There's a huge amount of profit, and if they don't, they don't really care. They got plenty of work. So it's really, you know, the bidding environment is what kind of tells the tale. Um, but I think that, you know, if we wanted to wait for fall, reevaluate the building, have a conversation with the parks, see if they want to use what's there, um, or tear the whole thing down and and to uh Joe's point, I think Joe mentioned it, uh, you know, single story might be able to do bathrooms in there and and do away with um, you know, the trailer. Uh, any number of those things could happen, I guess it's.
We just spent fifty thousand dollars on a, on a, on a toilet.
Brand new fields that those, those ba- those bathrooms would work very well at.
Uh, you know what I think you ought to do? I think we ought to try to sell it and get what we can, get a minimum price, and then use that toilet to uh to fix these buildings, because the fifty thousand dollars is and it, there's been a lot of problems with it. That's me, and I think Joe will agree with me on this one.
Just one other question about the building. Nate and I, we talked, there's mold in the basement as well, Nate, remember that? Uh, we use that for some storage. That's where the well is and all that, but there is mold uh in that area as well.
Yeah, Joe, you you're absolutely right. I mean, there's, there's holes as big as a basketball in the roof. So there there's really no good way to secure that. I I would make a recommendation to the parks uh that nobody's to enter the building. Uh, anything that's currently uh in there being stored uh is removed. Uh, maybe they get a storage box for the, you know, this upcoming season, but that that building, um, nobody belongs in that building right now. So I, so, yeah, to your point, there is um mold uh in the basement. But the only way to fix that is is get the money, fix the rafters, fix the sheathing, and get a new roof on it.
Okay, so it looks like we made a decision. We're gonna hold on this till the fall. Yes.
Yeah.
Everybody in agreement with that?
Okay. All right, the other one is this twenty thousand dollars to uh heat, insulate flooring. Um, the office building, I guess. Uh, Nate, I would like to know what the twenty thousand dollars is used for.
So I I really haven't had a a lot of discussion with this. I I did talk to Mike Nolan uh briefly about uh potential um uh a duckless mini split, uh the cost of between seven and eight thousand dollars. But, Rich, I think I might have mentioned that to you as well, um, as far as uh possible cares money where where Nellie um, could use a place to work and and that would provide um the best heating and cooling uh option in that office. But that's the extent of of my involvement with that.
Okay, so uh if we take out the uh, then that definitely can be reimbursed with care money, no question about it. So we ought to get that going as as soon as possible. Um, so what was this other money for then?
Somebody from the parks will have to speak to that, Rich.
Two of the money you told me, the twenty, you said twenty thousand for the office building, right?
Yes. What's, what's the question? Where, what's it for?
What's a twenty thousand dollars for?
Uh, insulation. Um, it's gonna require the roof is got, it's not a roof leak, but it's a, it's a ru- leak, a leak in the eaves, that's being fixed now. Um, and part of it was for heat. Um, we didn't know anything about um any of uh these, what do you call them, a split? Yeah, so.
May I ask a quick question to the parks? Um, is that office building, is that also uses a bridal suite for weddings?
One of the rooms is, yeah.
I mean, Rich, I don't know if you've had a chance to see that room, but if we're gonna be marketing uh this facility for weddings, that could use some lipstick.
Um, yeah.
I wouldn't be sad to see that area spruced up to be uh what a bride deserves.
Yeah, I I showed it to Tim uh of mine, and he said the same thing, and uh, oh, he's back. Uh, and uh, yes, it definitely needs work.
What kind of, what kind of work?
Can I, yeah, okay.
Go ahead, Paula.
If we're gonna use that as a bridal room, that building is not handicap accessible, and that's against ADA. And until you get a ramp in there, I don't know how we can rent out a room um, to a business that's not ADA compliant.
It's not being rented out?
They were charging like a hundred dollars to use that. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it it was an addition too, so that they could, uh, they picked up extra money for the bride to change her clothes in there. And the room has not, you know, the building has no uh, is not ADA um, compatible.
I think thankfully, that little porch is uh aligns pretty well with the door, I think. Nate or somebody could come up with a a pretty easy plan, or that's gonna be part of the assessment that we just voted on earlier this evening.
And there are companies that'll give you a ramp for free.
But to get back to my earlier comments, I just didn't say that and looked like I was running off. Um, I mean, if you go in there and take a look, I mean, I think it's got some pretty bad paneling, some staining. Um. There's sort of a bathroom in that building. It's horrifying, literally horrifying. Um, and you're not gonna be in there in the winter without any, without any uh heat. I mean, that's not a place I wouldn't want to go in there with my, you know, maid of honor and friends and get ready to celebrate. I think, I think that could use some attention.
So it sounds like then that we go ahead and we put in the uh the mini system, you know, now, and then we gotta somebody's gotta put together a plan of what needs to be done, which is a lot more than what's listed here.
Yeah, I I think a project needs to really be evaluated for that area.
Okay, so um, we'll plan to um put the mini system in, um, to get that ordered pretty quickly there, Nate. Um, and then uh we're gonna have to delay this, because we have no idea what we're supposed to be doing. Anybody? Anybody disagree with that or listening?
Nellie, what are your thoughts? You've probably dealt with most of the folks that come in.
Uh, yes, yes, um, the building isn't it, it, you're right, it needs the slap of lipstick on it. But it gives such good light with that huge window in the front that lovely pictures got taken and makeup being done in there was preferable. So really, if it got spruced up a bit, you could rent it out. It is a nice spot. Um, in terms of my items, there are a couple of other things that need to get upgraded in that office, including the wifi access and the telephone line, I think also needs to be upgraded in there. It's a very old unit in there. The bathroom is an absolute, should be demolished, blown up. Just never opened again. But the rest is good. If we could just spruce it up a bit, get it upgraded a little bit, and then the heating and AC would be lovely.
I think it's one of those things that could be a nice add on or part of the wedding package. I mean, it's something where I think if a bride is comparing locations and they say, oh, show me your bridal suite, I'm going to say we don't have one, is probably the right answer to say right now.
It's definitely rustic.
Rustic's a good word, yep.
There are some folks though that have that in their contract, so when these weddings start happening, we're going to have to address that to give them, either tell them they can't use that or come up with an alternative. So it is in their contract that they're going to be using that for a bridal suite. So this isn't a, you know, we can worry about it in the fall. This is a, we have these weddings coming up and it's going to have to be addressed.
Where's the closest bathroom, Nellie? In the lodge building itself?
In the lodge, yeah.
Can we give their $100 deposit back to those brides that wanted to use that room, give them the $100 deposit back and just say that the room, you know, it's not available at this time. I mean, you can't have somebody going in there in this condition.
Yeah, you can, but that's I would rather not do that if there's any way we can get around it because that wouldn't leave a good taste in my mouth if I was a paying customer.
To give the money back, you mean?
Yeah, not me counting all along that I'd have that place to put my purse and my, you know, and now all of a sudden
Get dressed.
Right, and I've made my decision accordingly, and now all of a sudden I don't have that available to me. And I also don't have time to book anywhere else, so I mean, that's kind of.
What would we need to do right away to make it accessible and updated enough for a bride to use?
I mean, that would be up to Nate to tell us what can be done, I guess. But as far as safety, I'm not in a position to assess safety, but I've seen it. It could use a little cosmetic work, but.
Well, it could use cosmetics and we need to be in compliance with ADA and.
Things in the bathroom has to be compliant, I mean, the ramp, talking significant, money to do that, significant to do that.
I don't know what we do otherwise, I don't know how to get around it.
Then, then, you know, the park commissioners need to sit down and address, I can go through the contracts and address how many people have reserved that room, they're thinking they have a bridal suite. So I don't know how we offer them an alternative, but.
Is there any, any area, like I know where Nellie goes, that's a pretty good sized room, okay? Is there any way that we could we could frame off an area, not a big one, but you know, 12 by 12.
They have chairs in it.
How about the, that conference room in the Loom Pond Lodge, could we wall off a section for the bride to change in there?
But why don't we just use the bigger room next door to that office area? That we have for storage now, clean that out, put Nellie out there, expand the bathroom. So put Nellie in that room, as long as we got heat and carpet, whatever you want to do, right? So look at the, I'd say if look at the whole building.
It's an extra room, right?
Extra room there.
Pretty full right now.
Well, junk right now, it's storage for somebody, but it is what it is, got to get out of there.
Yeah, let me, let me go through and see how many there are, and then we'll see what kind of a problem we're dealing with, whether we have to make something more permanent or temporarily or whatever, if it's only two people, three people, I just know I've seen it on a couple of the contracts.
Okay, so what are we doing?
We're going to look at Loom Pond Lodge and see if we can convert one of those rooms.
Okay, so with.
Ultimately, we have to get that building fixed if it's going to be part of the part of the plan going forward.
And the question is, why does it have to be part of the plan? Why can't you use some space inside the building? I'm just throwing that out.
Some folks rent the entire building, that's why, they they rent both the rooms.
But they don't rent those closets that we're talking about converting some, there's some small room back there, right Joe, that?
I I thought Boston Tavern was asking for that space, that office space of ours for storage to clean out more of the Loom Pond Lodge, so I don't think they're going to want to give up a room. They they asked somebody, I don't know who it was, if they could use our, that our office space for storage of chairs or whatever, or whatnot. So I don't think they're going to want to go back and say, we'll give you space inside, but you can ask them.
Question for Nate, since he's here, do we have any early ideas on what the ADA accessible bathroom at the old library is going to cost? Or we don't have the full figures yet?
We're projecting $40,000. It's only 12 by 12.
Is that because of the building? I mean.
No, this is, this is easy because you got the floors, you know, you got to make sure that and Nate can explain this better than I do, that everything is all certain levels and so forth and so on, they have to have drains.
Because where that one's built, I mean, you could bump it out and there's already a door between the two sides, you might be able to make the width larger, but I'll make him off mute, I'll let him.
But the the bottom line here is, this is not going to happen over the next two or three months. First of all, you got to go to the town meeting and get money. And second of all, you know, to put all that together with all the stuff that we're going on right now is not going to happen, okay?
So, so I think to get out of the situation we're in, if we can use one of those rooms in Loom Pond, Loom Pond, there's a small one. If, you know, I don't know that they have to, that the management company has to use that right now and and until we can figure something out later, let us use that room to get through
Can I, can I?
A few people.
Can I?
Yes.
I'm sorry Paula, but can I suggest that this is a problem that 12, 13, 14, 15 people don't have to be working on right now? And that perhaps, you know, a couple of us can work out?
I'm open to anything.
Okay. All right, so we we don't know what to budget on that either then. Except for getting the mini in there.
Yeah, getting the mini in there for sure, because that's a big budget item. And then I would budget just some cosmetic stuff, which I think Nate would be the best one.
What's cosmetic?
Paint.
That's easy, but I don't think that's the whole problem.
You need some, some paint, carpet, maybe a new window, windows in those rooms. Definitely the HVAC, and it's, it wouldn't, it's the bathroom, the bathroom would be the hard part.
Now, is that mini going to do that whole building, Nate?
It'll do, it'll do any area, if you, if you keep it separated, it wouldn't do the storage area unless you did a second one. You can do two, a two port compressor and have two heads, one in each area. So so we could size it enough to do both sides if you're going to condition that unfinished space.
Nate, can I ask you a question?
Yeah, sure.
Does it make any sense to put heat in there if you're not going to insulate it?
Nope, probably, probably not. And and that's something, Mike, you brought up, or you started to bring up our last budget meeting, was the green communities grants. So, you know, we we are going to focus or intend anyway to focus on the parks this next grant cycle. The DOE are knowing with COVID and everything else going on, they bifurcated the the grant application, they do it in the spring and fall now. And you're not allowed to get two in a row. So with everything going on, there's no way I'm going to be able to get, get it ready this spring. That doesn't mean we lose money, but I'm going to try to get the application in for the fall, which is going to include weatherization, insulation improvements, air sealing, weather stripping on the doors, wifi thermostats, LED lighting upgrades at Loom Pond Lodge. I don't see at all why we can't roll in insulation improvements this fall at the, in the office too. I think the mini split and and Rich kind of alluded to it, is I think it's a no brainer for the cares reimbursement. So even though it's not insulated now, it would make sense to put that in and you're going to get partially conditioned space, a lot better than not having any conditioning in there. So I think we should go ahead and do that and then we can reevaluate the insulation. There's the small access point in the unfinished space, and I think we could get in there, add ventilation, you know, gable end vents and then blow in cellulose, so the, the roof will be pretty easy or the, or the ceiling assembly will be easy. It's the walls, if the walls are uninsulated, well, we will have to rip off sheet rock and redo the sheet rock. But if we want to, you know, if the parks is, if the parks intend on using that long term, it makes sense to do this and and do it right. And maybe we can get some reimbursed through green communities and some through cares. Because we know that, you know, Nellie needs an office space and and if this building is it, well, it's 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 a necessary evil, we got to put the money in it. The the question I have, and I I will circle back with the Board of Health tomorrow, is I I know where the septic is for the lodge. I'm thinking there's just a cesspool that was out behind that office. I I don't know if that's going to be a whole nother issue, if we upgrade the bathroom, if we're going to be forced to upgrade the septic for the office. But I can, I can find that out.
Yeah, that is correct, that's where the, there is a cesspool back there.
Yeah, yeah, I thought so, and and, you know, cesspools, so when you do, when you do remodels, especially significant, if we're going to add usable area in that unfinished space, then it'll be an increase in footprint, it might require septic upgrades. But that's a, that's a whole nother conversation. I think that, you know, the way I'm looking at it and and Rich would know a lot better than me on this is I don't see any of these being necessarily a capital project. Like I was just kind of looking at numbers that I have for a ramp, it's around $5,000, you could get a ramp on that. Most of the interior stuff, I would, I would personally lean against, you know, going with carpet. I would put a vinyl composite floor tile in there, it's easy to clean, hypoallergenic, you're not worrying about dust, molds, no mold growing in it, anything like that. Very inexpensive, maybe $1,500 to put vinyl composite floor tile in that area. And like I said, I'm just kind of going through this quickly in my head. Tom Robinson can go out there, he can do some of the minor repairs. I got Dick Prince is a town painter, he's on the payroll. We can send him over there and do some painting. And again, this, a lot of this is is conditional on on whether or not the Board of Selectmen want to allocate facilities money. You know, we we do have a facilities budget. We have utilized some of that facilities budget to help the parks along, maintaining the buildings in the past. My personal feelings is that we would continue to do that. Use it out of facilities and do some of these minor repairs out of, out of facilities money versus the park.
Well, I think we talked about a wide range of things that need to be done, we need to get this down on paper to figure out what needs to be done and seems like a lot of costs. So, I don't know, I just don't think we're ready for this project yet, except for the mini split.
Place needs a new septic and everything else, I don't even know if we're ready for a mini split. So I think we need a better evaluation of what we need to do there.
Yeah, and that can't be done right now.
Nope, and my back cannot take anymore, I'm dying.
We can't do anything else, but you know, we got the old library, you know, we got the town hall, we got the highway department, you know, building that needs to start, that project. You know, and there's just tons of work that needs to be done. And I am, guess I'm a little surprised as to the extent potentially that may be done here. And I just think that not up for even decide what we're going to do, we'll throw money at it. Let's understand what we're going to throw money at.
Right. I've already found two people that have signed up for the bridal suite. So Mike, I can maybe get together with you and Paula, whoever wants to, so we can discuss an alternative.
Well, Leah, let me just point one thing out, anybody who you have signed up as a contract, saw that room and agreed to use that room for the fee.
Right.
So they know what they're getting into.
Yeah, but you know what, maybe we can just talk them out of it in general. And, you know, maybe.
Point of fact, they've all seen it and.
I think they were just looking for a place to, you know, to change and just have a few minutes to themselves.
Yeah, and that's what it served as the last year or so. And I realize that it's not the most beautiful thing in the world, and I was quite amazed that we were getting $250 for it.
Yeah.
I thought it was only 100, Mike.
That's incorrect.
Ah.
I think it just, I think it just speaks to, you know, brides just want a place to be able to go and literally just sit down away from everyone for a few minutes.
Right, before we we set that room up, they used to let them use the Cassidy Warburg room to do that.
Yeah, and maybe that's an alternative, because I've just been picking this out, but I haven't been looking to see if they have the whole place rented. But again, this is something that just a handful of us can work on privately without breaking any open meeting laws, it's not a big deal.
I didn't expect my comment to create 30 minutes of discussion, sorry about that, but I would like to see a plan so that something can be marketed in the future.
You are thorough, I'm going to miss that, you know.
Okay, so so we're, I understand here for the capital plan, that we're doing the $50,000 for the haunted house, the $28,000 for the tennis courts, the $20,000 for John Pond, we're going to have to reevaluate that whole thing. And the the office, the $20,000 for that, we don't know what that is except for the $6,000 to $7,000 for the mini split, which will be paid by COVID-19. Right? Okay. So I guess that's about it, so we wait for you to get back to us on the budget. And in the meantime, we'll try to get this draft contract together. And so everybody can take a review. And the tentative plan right now is to try to get this contract finalized by the end of the week to be approved on Monday. Is that the plan for everybody?
Yep.
One question for the parks, if I may. When Tim was on, you said you had taken a vote because you wanted to move forward with him, was that in it? Accepting the rental fees that he suggested or something else?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, because those rental fees will have to be part of the contract too. All right, anybody got anything else they want to bring up?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second the motion.
All those in favor, hold on a second, Mike, can you have the park commissioner adjourned first, please?
Yeah. I'm making a motion to adjourn the park commission at 9:45.
Second.
All in favor, Jesse? Joe? Paula?
Hi.
Darren, can you have the finance committee adjourned, please?
Absolutely, George, can you make a motion?
Yep, I'll make a motion to adjourn the finance committee.
Larry, second?
I'm sorry, can you?
Can you second that?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, all in favor, George?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Darren, aye.
Thank you guys, good night.
Thank you, guys. Good night.
Good night.
Uh, so Leah, you made a motion to adjourn. I, did Brian, did you second that?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
Uh, the camera, aye. Okay, thank you.